Good evening, everyone. We usually start on time, but the commission has been given some
Correspondence is late, so as we arrive, we're going to read a few things to, so we have had a chance to take in all the public comment, some of it delivered to us just now as we arrive. Anything that wasn't emailed to us?
The handwritten letter that's on top is the only thing that you were not emailed.
Say that again?
The handwritten letter is the only thing you weren't emailed.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Welcome to the May 16, 2019, regular meeting of the City of Santa Cruz Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Mr. Schiffern?
Here.
Conway?
Here.
Spelman?
Here.
Nielsen?
Here.
Greenberg? Singleton?
Here.
Chair Pepping?
Present, and Commissioner Greenberg is on her way. She has shared with us. Are there any statements of disqualification for any of the agenda items tonight?
Yes, I don't know if I'm disqualified, but I'm going to abstain on item number three, the 2929 Mission Street. I'm on the board of the Santa Cruz Housing Authority, which is the owner of the property, and while I have no financial interest, in order to avoid any perception of bias, I'm going to abstain on that item.
You'll join us for the conversation but not vote, or will you step out?
It's on the consent agenda. I don't know if there will be conversation, but I will not participate in the conversation.
Okay, all right. Any others? Next on our agenda item is, next on our agenda is oral communications, so we will invite you, members of the public, thank you for coming, to share your comments on anything that is on the agenda, and this section is to share your comments with the commission for anything that is not on the agenda tonight. So welcome and come up and address the commission for any, anything that falls into that category. Seeing none, we'll move to the approval of the minutes. Entertain a motion for approval of the May 2 meeting.
I am happy to move the minutes, but I did remember, I wanted to ask the commission, as I remember it, my motion included dropping the quote generally 15 minutes language from oral communications. Do other people remember that? I thought that was part, it is not reflected in the minutes, but I think that was part of my motion. So if there's no objection, I'd move the minutes and with that, change.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. The next agenda item is consent agenda, items two and three. Would anyone like to pull these items for discussion?
I just have a question on item number two, which is the DNA Comedy Club. The staff report mentions that there are going to be security cameras as part of the operation, but it doesn't say how many hours they'll be operating. Is the intention that they're going to be 24-hour security cameras there, or just while it's, the club is open?
Okay. Yeah, we have the applicant and the planner here. What I recommend is also seeing if there's anybody from the public that wants to pull any of these, and then it'll be up to you as to where you want to put them in the public hearing schedule, and we can certainly address your question if that's all you want on that.
I don't really need to pull it. I don't have any problem with the recommendation. I just had that question.
So items two and three, we will vote as, on consent unless members of the commission or members of the public, you can pull this if you'd like us to discuss it, otherwise we'll vote. Anyone want to pull either of these items? 155 River Street South, the Comedy Club, and 2929 Mission, the Total Fitness Expansion? Come on up to the mic, come on up to the mic so everyone can hear you.
Good evening. I'm Mike Pappas. I'm the co-owner of DNA's Comedy Lab. We have eight cameras throughout the lab right now. You can see the outside throughout the doors, one in each of the theaters that show all the way through into the exits, and so there's a total of eight cameras. The cameras are on 24/7, and then we are also putting floodlights all around the building.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm. And hours of operation on the genus is 12 to 12, but will be closed before midnight, and usually shows start around 7. They're about 90-minute shows. Thank you.
Okay, all in-
The consent agenda?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, but I abstain on item number three.
Any opposed? So those pass unanimously with Commissioner Schiffern abstaining for the portion of item number three. Is that clean enough? Will you break it out? Think you can.
Yeah, we might have a separate motion on Comedy Club versus 2929.
Plenty of times people make motions and then vote no on them.
Yeah, I think we're clean there.
So I would assume that we could make a motion and abstain on it as well.
You advise us to do otherwise?
Okay, that's all right.
Sure?
Okay.
Okay, the next agenda item is under general business, and we have a staff report, I believe, for the capital improvement program and its consistency with the 2030 general plan.
Great, good evening, Chair, Commission members. Thank you for having me. My name is Sarah Fleming, and I am principal planner overseeing the long-range planning and policy team where this topic falls. And so I am here today to present to you staff's findings on the 2020 through 2024 capital improvement program and its consistency with our general plan 2030 and recommend, recommendation for a planning commission as well. So the reason that we're here is that state law requires that there is a conformance review between the general plan and the capital improvement program each year, and what we need to determine is that a project is consistent with this general plan if it will further the objectives and policies of the plan and not obstruct their attainment. So the general plan is really the city's blueprint. It is the overarching policy document of the city that all of the implementation tools fall under. So the policy is set at the general plan level, and then the implementation tools such as specific plans, area plans, zoning ordinances, things of that nature, all then enact the policies in this plan. So the state mandates, I believe now it's eight elements that must be in general plans. Jurisdictions can decide if they so choose to add additional elements. The City of Santa Cruz has decided to do that. We do have a couple that aren't required here, but you can see here we have policies related to topics of housing, historic preservation, arts and culture, community design, land use, mobility, economic development, civic and community facilities, hazards, safety and noise, parks recreation and open space, and natural resources and conservation. So when we look at each of these CIP items, we want to look at the conformance with, and the consistency with those topics in the general plan. So the 2020 to 2024 capital improvement plan, or CIP, for the purposes of this analysis, we break it into three categories. So we have new projects. These are projects that have not yet been analyzed for any sort of consistency, so those are the ones we'll be looking at today. We have three that we'll be looking at. There's ongoing and carryover projects, so as you can see, this is a multi-year CIP, and so usually these are very large projects that don't get completed in one year, and so there are funding implications over multiple years. For these ongoing and carryover projects, or in the CIP, you'll see they're referenced as existing projects, they've undergone review in a prior year, so we won't be talking about those today. And then any maintenance or improvements to those existing facilities, as those maintenance and improvement efforts are ancillary to the original facility, those have been considered to have been reviewed under a previous CIP. What did I do? There we go. Okay, so now I've put together this consistency matrix to try to make it as easy as possible to see what the project is, what department it falls under, where you can find it in your capital improvement plan document, or the draft one that you have now. The selection of related general plan 2030 goals, policies and actions related to those projects that would make them consistent, and then whether staff has found and recommends them to be consistent or not. So the first one we have here is a Mission Street Improvement Plan. This falls under the Public Works Department umbrella, and you can find this on page 67, although that might be a mistype. I think it's actually page 66 of your CIP if you have that in front of you and are looking at it. And the two main elements that this is covered by would be our mobility element and our natural resources and conservation element. So in mobility, we talk about having land use patterned, street design, and access solutions that facilitate multiple transportation alternatives, and we talk about safe, sustainable, efficient, adaptive, and accessible transportation system. So the Mission Street Improvement Plan is in our environmental impact report for the general plan itself, there are mitigation measures that help mitigate the impacts of the general plan, and one of those mitigation measures in the EIR is this, certain intersections to be improved to facilitate, on Mission Street, to facilitate the plan, general plan growth. And so what this plan would do is it would create a coordinated improvement and implementation plan that would then be the overarching document that would guide those improvements. And so with that, and it looks like here based on the CIP, and I'm not the expert on this project, but it looks like the improvements are going to be required at Chestnut and King, Laurel, Bay and Swift. And so you can see here in the mobility element, we're talking about the land use patterns and sustainable, efficient, adaptive, accessible transportation system. Really, this type of improvement would allow better navigation of bike and ped activity, would allow for better facilitation of public transit such as buses, and so really, we are providing and accommodating for multiple transportation modes, implementing ped bike, mass transit, road system improvements through the CIP, so you can see a direct correlation there. In terms of the natural resources and conservation, goal NRC 7 talks about a reduction in energy use, and one of the policy, or the goals underneath, or the policies underneath that would be to promote the implementation of circulation system improvements that can reduce local consumption of fossil fuels. And if we're improving our bike ped facilities and improving ways for buses and other transit, alternative transit needs to get through our street navigation, our roadway, navigate a roadway system, we are really helping to reduce the dependence on fossil fuels because people are able to use those alternative modes of transportation much easier. So for that reason, staff believes that this one is consistent and would recommend that one being found as such by the commission. The next one is the SoCal Pine Storm Drain, and this project is to alleviate flooding on SoCal Avenue between Pine and Doyle Street by conducting a 30-inch, constructing, a 30-inch pipeline on Pine Street from SoCal Avenue to Broadway, and the approximate linear length would be about 1,800 feet. And so for this one, again, it's Public Works. You'll find it on page, actually, 87, sorry about that, of your document, and this falls primarily under our civic and community facilities element. So our goal CC2 is to have a comprehensive community facilities and services, and we want to make sure we're providing those in keeping with the needs of a growing and diverse population. And we're seeing that in this area here, there is not a storm drain currently. There is flooding, and so we need to make that improvement. So that's consistent with that goal. And then goal CC5, a sustainable and efficient stormwater system. So we want to maintain clear flows. We want to strive to contain drainage. You want to design the storm drainage system to not cause problems in other basins and reduce stormwater pollution. And so staff believes that these two goals and the CIP project are in conformance. So the next one is the downtown mixed-use project. This is, sits in the Economic Development Department and can be found on, believe it or not, it's right, page 149. That one's right. And so this one hits a few of our, of our general plan elements. It falls under housing, economic, and civic and community facilities. And I realize that at the last council meeting, I am sure most of the commissioners know, there was a, basically a deferral of the starting of this project because council decided to form a subcommittee of the council that will be looking at some of the previous findings and determinations made on this garage project and library project, and maybe reanalyzing some of those things. So this project is not slated to start right away. However, it is still in the CIP, so we do want to make the consistency findings, even though it might not start right away, if at all. So, okay, so the first one, we have the housing element. The downtown mixed-use project, I guess I can read to you what this says. It's early, early phase design and development of the downtown mixed-use project to include library, parking, housing, and commercial uses on the city-owned parking lot four. So that's the one at Cathcart. And so housing and adequate diversity in housing types and affordability levels to accommodate present and future housing needs of Santa Cruz residents. And one of the policies under that goal is to concentrate new housing in the central core, as well as along major commercial corridors and on major opportunity sites consistent with the land use element. Goal number two is increased and protected supply of housing affordable to extremely low, very low, and moderate income households. And this project, as currently proposed, would provide affordable housing. And so for that reason, staff feels that it is in compliance with that goal. And then goal six, fulfill the city's housing needs while promoting an environmentally sustainable, compact community with clearly defined urban boundaries. And one of the policies under there is to promote transit-oriented mixed-use residential developments that are close to services. So developing on that site is infill development, and that would allow us to, instead of building out in our green belts or in other areas, kind of concentrate that development in the, in the urban core and allow a better use of, of the site than currently the parking lots that's there now, and it's close to services, and will help people be able to walk more as opposed to use their cars. So that's the housing items. Economic development, a vibrant and regional economic center that could be determined to be our downtown. And so really there, you're talking about encouraging the development of year-round businesses and visitor activities that can attract and engage local residents as well as tourists, implement transportation parking, and alternative transportation improvements consistent with circulation planning, and providing a variety of parking resources to support a diverse retail base. And so the other, the next one in ED is diverse and dynamic business districts. So we want to have a downtown as a welcome and inviting destination for residents and create distinctive and active pedestrian environments downtown. So based on the plans as kind of currently discussed for the downtown mixed-use project, staff feels that these are in compliance with general plan. And then finally, civic and community facilities. We want to have excellent educational opportunities and resources for our residents and visitors. And one of the key points of that is to make all library buildings accessible to the physically disadvantaged and the elderly, and any new improvements that would be made on that site related to the library would be top of the line in terms of ADA access and resources for the community. So with that, staff has evaluated the new projects in the current draft CIP, and we've determined that they're consistent with the general plan, and we recommend that the Planning Commission by motion make the following finding, that the Planning Commission finds that the City of Santa Cruz 2020 through 2024 capital improvement plan is consistent with the city's 2030 general plan. And I think actually that's to say capital improvement program is consistent with the general plan. And I'm here for any questions you have related to consistency. Happy to answer if I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Who decides what projects are in the CIP?
That's a great question. So there is, it's a pretty iterative process. At the beginning of the fiscal or the development of the new CIP, I think a lot of projects get thrown into the bucket for requests. Not everything gets funded, and it depends on which fund the money, what the project is slated to come out of, how much money's in that fund, what's already in the queue. And I know that Public Works especially has a host of other kind of prioritization procedures that they put in for their specific projects, but really at the end of the day, it's, it's based on a number of factors.
What is the role of the city council in the approval of projects in the CIP?
So this has to happen before the city council adopts the CIP, and that's done as a part of their budget adoption process. So it will go forward along with the budget, which is being discussed now. There was a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and there'll be several more budget meetings, and this is part of that process.
Does the city council have the legal authority to change projects in the CIP?
It's probably within their purview. I'm not the expert, but I would assume that that is, and I would expect that that's within their purview.
So essentially, the CIP represents the city, city council's decision on what projects they'd like to do over the next three years or future years based on recommendations coming from the staff?
I would say that, can you repeat that? Because I, I had a thought, but then I lost it with the last part of what you said, so.
Staff recommends a CIP, and ultimately, it's approved by the city council, and the city council, as the elected decision-makers for the city, has the ability to amend the CIP if it wishes to. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, sure, sure. I mean, the, the council is the, the decision-making body for the city. So if they adopt it, so say in previous years, there's previously adopted CIPs that staff is currently working on, that, that is direction to staff to work on those projects. If they want to change that, that is absolutely their prerogative.
So if they change their, a decision about a project that has been in the CIP, would it follow that it might make sense to amend the CIP to reflect the council decision?
I'm not sure that I understand your question. Can you provide an example?
Yes, I'll provide the example that's before us, the mixed-use project.
Sure.
As you said on Tuesday, the council decided to put that project on hold.
That's correct, yep.
And to look at alternatives.
Yep.
I just, I think the commission knows, and I'm sure staff knows, the project that's in the CIP has been quite controversial.
Absolutely.
So one of the reasons I think the council decided to put it on hold was to give a chance to look at a range of alternatives. The mixed-use project may show up at the end, it may not.
That's correct.
But it seems to me that, that for that process to have integrity, the process of looking at alternatives, the city shouldn't be adopting a document that proposes that the, the project that's been put on hold. So I guess that's where I'm heading.
Sure.
Is that it might make more sense, given the council's decision to maybe reword the project description at this time, what we know is going to happen is it's going to be a library project. What's going to go along with it will come after the council makes its decisions.
Sure.
And so I just, I'm concerned that a process that's starting has integrity and the, the city isn't sending a mixed message that on the one hand, they're going to take a fresh look at the alternatives, but at the other hand, their CRP is proposing a project that the council has put on hold.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. I appreciate your viewpoint. At this point, when we bring this forward, this is the most current CIP that we have. And so when we, when I bring this forward to you, I am basing this on the CIP that is in place currently right now, the draft. That's why you're seeing it on here. If council, when they move to finally adopt this, want to make changes to it, that's absolutely their prerogative. That is not under our purview, being staff or the planning commission's purview. And so the reason that we have it before you now is because it is currently in the draft CIP that will be going to council. And so it's the responsibility of the planning commission to take a look at that and determine if they feel like it's in conformance with the general plan. If they don't, they can recommend that it's not, but at the end of the day, it's the council's responsibility to decide if they want that to move forward or not.
So am I understanding you correctly that the, the commission's purview is not to follow the directions of the city council?
That is not what I said. The commission's purview is to take a look at the draft CIP, that is the current draft that the city has now. The city has not changed that draft. The finance, there's been no changes to the CIP draft. And so your responsibility is to look at that CIP draft and say, this version that is in place now is either in conformance or not in conformance with the general plan. You're welcome.
Chris Schneider, Assistant Director of Public Works. And to clarify, it's a process they're starting, so they haven't changed the project description yet. At the end of the process, they may. The CIP is a five-year living document. It'll change. When they adopt the CIP, they really only adopt the first year, and that's shown as, you know, with the budget. The following four years are more concept, in a way, and it is your responsibility to see if all those concepts are within the, you know, the city's general plan.
Mr. Schiffern? So are you saying that the council didn't decide to put the mixed-use project on hold?
Well, they may, but they haven't. Where, staff won't, staff won't be working on the project. Staff won't work on the project, staff won't be working on the project if they've put it on hold. But they haven't changed the project yet.
No, they haven't decided to go forward with the project either.
Exactly. And staff's aware of what the council, how they're acting on different projects, and if the project is on hold, staff's going to put resources towards that project until a decision is made on what the ultimate project is going to be.
Okay, thank you.
Other than providing information to council as needed.
Thank you, Chris.
Any other questions for staff before we hear from the public? So we invite the public to address the commission on this. We'll just be receiving the update from staff. That's about all we'll do, is receive the staff report and discuss it. We welcome you to address the commission on this. Anyone like to address the commission? Commissioner Schiffern?
We're doing more than receiving it. We're, the recommendation is that the Planning Commission find that the 2024 proposed CIP is consistent with the general plan. So we're making a finding on that it is consistent.
Thank you for that correction. With that correction, would any member of the public like to address the commission? So it's back to us for a discussion? Or a motion? Mr. Greenberg?
So my sense is that this, the proposed project that's in question that has been put on hold, it could be that it's ultimately adopted, or it could be that it's completely transformed into something else. But the draft of the proposal for it, is that consistent with the general plan or not? Is the question before us, whether or not it's ultimately changed, right? So I don't know what the concern is exactly.
Mr. Schiffern?
Being a CIP, for a project to be in the CIP, it's a city commitment to do the project. That's why it's in the CIP. If the city wasn't committed to do the project, it wouldn't be in the CIP. The CIP tries to schedule projects that the city is determined to do over a period of time, and certainly, things can change in future years. But it represents that in a particular year, what the city's commitments are and what projects the city would like to do. And so my concern is, in a context where there's strong feelings on all sides, and the council has decided in response to those feelings that it wants to take a fresh look at what the options are and put the project, that staff in good faith, that's, it is, I'm not denying, it is the project that the council had decided to go forward with, but they're now saying they're going to put it on hold and take a fresh look. And I'm just concerned that by including it in the CIP, it's going to look like this means that the council is intent, that the city is intending to do this project. And I think at this point, given the council's action on Tuesday, that's not an appropriate, an appropriate project to, as defined, an appropriate project to be in the CIP. So from my perspective, if the project was defined as a downtown library project, that certainly represents where the council is at this time, where the city is at this time. I think that's what should be in the CIP. I hope that responds to your question.
Commissioner Conway?
I was just going to say that I don't feel that a consistency finding, a recommendation from us, we don't have authority to decide whether the project goes or not, and I think we are, we have a role in the process right now. The CIP is a very large document. It is a living document, and it changes from within every year. It's constantly being reassessed. I have no doubt that the way that this ends up, this is not a funding recommendation. It's not a go-or-no-go recommendation in any way that isn't in our, it's not our job. So I feel fine moving the staff recommendation to, for the consistency findings.
Is there a motion?
Yes, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Conway's moved the staff recommendation, and Commissioner Nielsen's second. Is there any discussion?
I would like to move to amend the motion on the floor to change the description of the project on the downtown mixed-use project to state early phase design development of a downtown library.
To the chair, if I may. Respectfully, Commissioner Schiffern, that is not within the role or the purview of the Planning Commission to make those changes.
So you're saying the commission either can decide that it's consistent with the CIP as written is consistent, but it can make no recommended changes?
You could make a recommendation of changes, but if I heard your motion correctly, it sounded like you were recommending, you were making a motion to make the change, and that is not within the authority of the Planning Commission. If you'd like to make a motion to make a recommendation, that would probably be more appropriate. Thank you.
My motion to amend would be to recommend that the project description for the mixed-use project be changed to early phase design and development of the downtown library.
So there is a motion on the floor?
I'm making a motion to amend the motion on the floor.
Not a friendly amendment, but a motion to amend?
Well, it could be friendly if she'd accept it, but I don't think she will.
What are you offering? What are, are you offering, are you asking, offering a friendly amendment, or are you making a motion?
I'm making a amendment to amend, I'm making a motion to amend the motion on the floor. If I get a second, then that gets voted on first. If it passes, the motion on the floor. Change if it fails, the motion on the floor doesn't.
Is there a second?
Let me see if I understand correctly. So Commissioner Schiffern, so you feel that if this amendment were, if this were to be added, it would, your concern is about the appearance of our decision that this is consistent with the general plan, that that might appear that we were, as a commission, endorsing a final product as opposed to an early design stage of a project. Is that the issue?
Well, in a way, yes. What's being proposed here is a project that, from my perspective, is currently inconsistent with council action, and also sends a message that the city is still committed to a very controversial project that the council has put on hold. So my recommendation in this amended motion, and I thank staff for correcting me, is that that be changed to be clear that at this, in this CIP this year, that there would not be a project to have a mixed-use development as defined in the CIP before us, because it doesn't represent where the council is. And I think it does send an inappropriate message to the public about what the city's position is on this project.
Is there a second to the motion to amend? That fails without a second. Is there any discussion of the original motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
So the motion passes 6-1 with Commissioner Schiffern voting against, other commissioners voting for. And that moves us on to the public hearing. Next is agenda item 5914 and 916 Seabright Avenue. We have a staff presentation.
Yeah, Mike Ferry will be giving the staff presentation this evening. He's a project manager on this application, and he'll need a minute here to get set up.
So this project was one of the, might have been the first project where we had a community meeting, community outreach meeting. We had it at the Pacific Cultural Center. It was last fall. We had about 35 people show up. We start those meetings off kind of describing the city's role, so, you know, I explain the entitlement process and when the public would be able to attend public hearings and express their views. We also had some design changes that we announced at that meeting that we wanted to see. One was that we thought that the unit closest to Seabright should face Seabright. We also thought that the guest parking spaces could be put in the back of the development instead of right in front, which the original plan had. We did discuss with the applicant about pedestrian access from Sumner Street through the development onto Seabright. So all of those concerns were addressed by the applicant's letter. I attached that to your staff report. The other item that was pretty consistent with the neighborhood at that meeting was that the building was too tall. It didn't fit into the neighborhood, and there was fear that the folks on Sumner Street would inherit people from this new development, parking on their street, and then walking into the development. So that letter from the applicant in response to those is attached to your staff report. So the project site's a little over 21,000 square feet. It's outside of the Seabright area plan, just north of it, about a block north. It's in what's called the, I think it's called the North Seabright area. The site was mapped as an archaeological-sensitive area, and we had an archaeologist go out and take a look, and the report came back negative. There was also some comments at the community meeting that perhaps the houses were historic, and they could be maintained and somehow built into this development. We had a historic report done, and the result of that report was neither of them were historic or notable in architecture, and for sequoia purposes, they could be removed. So the general plan designation for the property is low-medium residential. That looks for something between 10 and 20 dwelling units per acre, and this proposal is coming in at 18.4 per acre. The higher end of the density is what we have been aiming at for the last, I don't know, seven or eight or nine years. And I've got four of the general plan policies noted in the staff report that direct us to go for the higher end of the density, and that's if there's not environmental resources at stake on the property. And that's the case in this development. Based on seven general plan policies that I listed in the staff report, and four additional policies from the active transportation plan, we've included a condition that does allow public access through that sidewalk area from Sumner to Seabright and back. And I've got some slides where I'll go over all of this. The frontage improvements that'll be required is a 24-foot recessed parking bay on the Seabright side. There'll be a new driveway entrance on both Seabright and Sumner that meet ADA requirements. There'll be a street light out there on Seabright. This project requires 1.3 units to be designated as affordable at 80% of the area median income, and that the applicant pay the 0.35% of that as an in-luck fee. So the homes are three stories. They range in size from about 2,000 to 2,200 square feet. They've each got a two-car garage, small backyard area. They've got a balcony area. It meets all the RL zone district standards. They're not asking for exceptions or variances. We did have an issue with the massing of the building from the original set of plans that came into today, so we've put a condition of approval in there that tries to break up the massing of the building by the use of different materials, maybe paint colors, that sort of thing. So I'll take you through the pictures. So this is the area. It's, you know, right in the middle of Seabright. The actual Seabright area plan ends right here on Clinton Street, so they're outside of that with those really specific guidelines. The general plan is low-medium residential, and you can see this whole area around here is the same. These are R1.5 zone districts, but this is RL, which is the multiple residential low-density. So you can see that from the aerial that there's, looks like there's three units on this property. It looks like there's two here. There's two units, two units, two units, surrounded by multiple residential developments. This is the front of the house that's going to be demolished from Seabright Avenue. The house just to the north is about two and a half stories. I don't know what the height is. And then going over to Sumner, this is the deeded access, or the legal access that this property has on Sumner. You can see the house right to the right, single story. The house to the north is single story, a pretty good distance away from where this development will be. And then kind of looking around to the east in that cul-de-sac, we can see two stories in the neighborhood, two stories right on the street. But then on the rest of the street, going north, those were all single families. So this is the site plan. All the traffic will enter and exit off of this driveway onto Seabright. There's going to be a locked gate at this side, and they'll include a knockbox type of a device so that fire and the trash truck can get through there, but no other private vehicles will be able to enter and exit on that site. That's the pedestrian walkway that we've been talking about. Since the original plans came in, there's some ADA ramping and guardrails that doesn't show up on some of the elevations that I'll show you in a minute. So I think maybe the architect can talk about that. You can see the rear backyard areas. They're 10 feet deep. There's second-floor balconies that provide the private open space. So they exceed the required 400 square feet of open space by about 90 feet per unit. They meet all the RL zone district standards, the front yard setback. The rear yard setback is, the requirement is 10 feet. Looks like they're about 18 feet from the rear property line. We did ask for some enhanced landscaping when we first got this, so they're putting as much as they can up in the front. Again, that ramping is going to take away a lot of opportunity. They've got a landscape strip that's, I think it's three feet if I remember right, and they've got a lot of shrubs. They've got climbing vines. There'll be a new six-foot-tall redwood fence. And then this is a planting area that is now in an area where the guest parking is required. So these folks are required to have two parking spaces per unit, and then two guest parking spaces for each of the four units. So, one for four. So the ground floor on all of the units, except the front one, is pretty much the same. There's an entry, there's a bathroom, a bedroom, stairs up to the first floor. They reoriented this unit one so that the front door is facing out on Seabright. The second floor is the living area with a kitchen, family room, that sort of thing, half-bath. And then the third floor contains two bedrooms. They each have a bath, they each have closets. There's a laundry area built into that. And then the elevations. So this is the Seabright. Unit one is on the Seabright elevation, and you can, it used to have a front porch kind of a setup over here, so that's been rotated around, and the front door's been rotated to meet Seabright. This would be the unit that was on the east side, the farthest on the east side. Rear elevations, pretty much the same thing, except you've got these balcony areas that break that look up a little bit. And then this is the Sumner side, unit nine. So they've got cement plaster walls on the ground floor, they've got this hardy shingle siding on the second and third, and then comp roof material on the top. So the, I spelled it out in the staff report the way we measure height, so the city has always done that. They use average heights and average grades. And when you come in at a 30-foot height, the peak of the roof is higher than that quite often. So in this instance, we are, the 30-feet average height, the peak of the roof here is 36 feet. So this is facing Seabright. And this is facing Sumner, same thing, 30... Same thing, 30 and 36. So I asked, because one of the planning commissioners has consistently asked for these perspectives, and it didn't come out quite the way I was expecting it, so I kind of can walk you through it. This is the proposed house. The adjacent lot to the south has one of those three units. It's a, looks like a garage from the front. I didn't walk around in there, but that's the closest unit. And then the two-story that's to the north, I showed you the picture of, that's the distance that it's located away from this house. And then on the Sumner side, that's even trickier because it's a cul-de-sac. So this is a garage in the back of a unit on Clinton Street, and this is the adjacent single-story that I showed you that was kind of that green color house. And then this is the house to the north. So there's a bit of a separation between those. I don't know, off the top of my head.
I'm going to invite the public to address the commission in a moment, so please let staff make their presentation.
So we got a shadow study today. You can see that the shadow doesn't leave the site on the longest day of the year. On the shortest day of the year, at 2:00 PM, the shadow does go to the adjacent site. That's December 21st. And on December 21st at 10:00 AM, it's going over to the site a little bit. So that's going to be the extreme day of the year. So I drove up and down the street today, and I took the pictures. In the staff report, I talked about some of the other developments that have been approved that are newer, maybe in the last 15 years along Seabright Avenue, and I kind of described where they were, but these are the pictures. So this particular development's, the average height's 28 feet, and the peak of the roof is 35 feet. One right next to it is 28 feet for an average height. The peak of that roof is 30 feet. It's a shot of those two together. I forget the exact dates that those were built, probably 2010-ish, I'd guess. So the recent development is called the Breakers. The average roof height there is 29.5 feet, 29 and a half feet, and the peak of the roof in this development is 33 feet. And then this development, I don't know when that was constructed. Was it 10 years ago, maybe?
It was completed about 2009, if I recall.
2009. So the average height here is 26 and a half feet, and the peak of the roof is 30 feet. This lot slopes down off of Seabright. So this is a rendition of what the development will look like. You've got the front porch and the front doors, so the ADA ramp and guardrails doesn't show up in here. And another thing that's not really clear is that the elevation at the sidewalk, the difference between the elevation at the sidewalk and the finished first floor is about four feet. So the finished first floor is four feet higher than the sidewalk. So we had some pointed questions about the demolition permit. We do regulate demolition. The purpose is to maintain affordable housing opportunities to protect low and moderate-income tenants. Both of these, we've got two different demolition permit processes, and both require income verification. If you can't do that, which is often the case because the folks just don't want to go through the paperwork that they have to pay to go through to verify their income, then we assume that it's low or moderate tenants. So the two demo categories that we have are the easy one, which is for a single-family or a duplex. That was the findings that I gave you in your staff report, was for a single-family and a duplex. So we started to get some questions about that, and then I turned the page from the single-family duplex to multi-unit demolition, and this is considered multi-demolition, even though it's a single-family and a duplex. The multi-demolition is, talks about three or more units. So when that happens, you have to not only do relocation assistance, but replacement housing requirements kick in. So what I handed out to you today, that set of findings is a revised set of findings that has the correct demolition findings attached to it. All the other findings are exactly the same, so it's just the demo findings that have changed.
20 onward?
I'm sorry?
Conditions 20, 21, 22?
They're findings numbers, and ironically, I don't have it in front of me. Yeah, so it begins with finding number 20. So basically, we've rewritten the findings so that this application will be consistent with not only 1350 but 1390, and that is what covers the replacement housing. And I'm going to walk you through like a worst-case scenario on what this means with this project. So replacement housing requirements, in this Zone District, 50% of the units have to be replaced, and that can be done as a bedroom count. So we haven't walked through the existing units yet, but we're told that there's four bedrooms, a total of four bedrooms, which means they're going to have to replace two of these bedrooms, 50% of those. All the units that are being proposed are three-bedroom units. One of them is going to be an affordable unit, and this demolition allows you to use the affordable unit for the bedroom replacement unit as long as it's being rented. So we did speak briefly with the applicant tonight, and the intention is to rent the units, and he says that the property owners may rent it always. If they sell one of the units, that affordable unit becomes the affordable unit, and two replacement bedrooms have to be provided. They can't pay an in-lu fee for more than 50% of them, so somewhere on the site or off-site, the bedroom replacement will have to occur according to our regulations, according to the revised findings that we have. So I understand this is a complicated last-minute thing. I apologize for throwing that in. That was just all my fault. The plan maximizes infill density. We're surrounded by green builds. We've got recommended conditions of approval that require that pedestrian easement. We've got conditions to further break up the massing with color and different materials. We've got a condition in there to enlarge some of the little landscape planners so that we can get more specimen-type trees in front of the garage. So I think with those findings and some of those conditions, we can make the findings to support the design permit. So we're recommending that the commission recommend to the city council acknowledgement of the environmental determination and approval of the tentative map, design permit, and the residential demo authorization. I did get, I'm pretty sure I got 17 letters in opposition. I could be off by one or two.
Seventeen, and what was the last name?
Seventeen letters in opposition of the project, primarily based on the design and the massing. No other comments from the public other than all the letters, and I'm assuming that you got them all. So that concludes the presentation.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant to address the commission.
Welcome.
Evening. Sheriff President, Commissioners. I'm Derek Van Alstine. I represent Derek Van Alstine Residential Design, and I'm here with Mike Inslee, who is the staff architect in my office.
Could you make sure that you're leaning into the mic, sir?
Is that better?
I believe so.
I think I'll reserve at least some of my comments to responding to public comments. We've been through, this has been a long process for us. It's been, after we had the initial meeting with public, we went through a major revision, reduced the size of the building, moved the parking to the rear. So we've been through a number of major revisions, which is why some of these pieces aren't exactly accurate, and I apologize for that, but each one of these representations represents quite a bit of work. We're happy to work with the neighborhood. We actually had a good time at the meeting, and it was good to meet all of the neighbors. We're a neighbor. We, our office is right up the street. I've been in Santa Cruz since 1968, so I feel a resonance with the neighbors, and I understand their positions, and I understand that Seabright is a tight neighborhood and the street is not large. It's not, there's not a lot of width in the street. So I understand all those comments. We're trying to respond in the best way possible to work with the neighborhood and work with staff. Staff's been terrific, but we've been through a number of iterations to get to where we are today. There are no asks for this project. We designed it to conform to all the regulations, to conform with the general plan and to conform totally with the zoning regulations, and we're still glad to work with the city and work with neighbors to make it the best project that it can be and be good neighbors. So with that, I'd like to just reserve some time at the end, and I'd be glad to respond to whatever comments arise.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff before we go to public comment?
You have a question on the replacement housing. So just to clarify, it is two bedroom, rental bedroom units that have to be provided, essentially, if it's sold at some point. They would still be on the hook to provide two rental units. Is that going to be on, that would be within the project? How does that work exactly?
Yeah, it would be, it would be a second unit.
So while the, while the development's being rented, the inclusionary unit can serve as the replacement housing unit. If and when they go to sell the condominiums or townhouses, we can no longer double-dip. So there's a for-sale inclusionary unit and then the rental replacement housing unit, so it would go to two units essentially if they sell.
And again, their only option is onsite. It would be provided in this project.
Yeah, the code does allow for off-site housing. We, you know, we've done it before. For a development this small, I don't know that it's feasible, but the code would allow something like that.
Mr. Conway?
Yeah, I'm just confused.
I'm sorry.
No. So this is, this is why I hate these mapped rentals. I just think it should be a rental. Never mind, that's beside the point. Totally get to do it. But I don't understand this because if a project, so it's mapped, but it's serving as a rental project, once you sell the first unit, you file with the state, you're off and going, then it's a for-sale project. So are you suggesting that the deed-restricted inclusionary unit is sold as an affordable unit, and that somehow the owner retains one unit and that serves as a rental?
Right, right.
So now they've, they're providing the deed-restricted for-sale unit, they paid their fractional fee, and they retain ownership of one unit and rent it at an affordable rate in perpetuity?
Supposedly, they could in theory sell it to somebody else, but it cannot be owner-occupied. It needs to be rented as an affordable unit. And also keep in mind, this is, this is a worst-case scenario. I mean, we're, this scenario operates under the assumption that all of those units are occupied by lower moderate-income families. I mean, there could be a scenario where we go through the income verification process, and it turns out that they aren't lower moderate-income households, and then these replacement housing's requirements would not apply. So we're just, we're just sort of giving you what a worst-case would look like, worst-case for the applicant.
Didn't you, because you didn't get those tenants to go through the income verification process, you're defaulting to assume they are lower-income? So that isn't that determination made?
Just to throw it out there, I mean, we have a sort of a blanket condition that would cover that scenario.
So you will go through income verification?
Yeah, and this does need to go to council, and we would like to get this issue wrapped up before it does go to council so that we're firm on, you know, exactly what we're talking about, but...
You're asking us to consider worst-case and whether we want...
We were, we were giving you the worst, you know, the, you know, the assumption that all the units are occupied and what that would look like in terms of affordability.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't make clear. We'll invite you up after, you can have a seat, and we'll invite you up after the public comment. Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Commissioner Singleton and then Commissioner Nielsen.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions related to traffic. So in the staff report, it says the nine units is going to generate approximately 57 net new daily trips, and I'm assuming that's along Seabright Avenue or just car trips out of the...
Yeah, they're all going to come in and out of Seabright.
Okay, and do you happen to know what the current daily car count is on Seabright Avenue?
No idea.
Okay.
Chris is here.
You have the...
Public Works Directors or System Director.
Schneider, System Director, Public Works, is approximately 15,000 vehicles a day.
15,000?
Yes.
So...
It's a city arterial street.
Okay. So this is significantly less than 1% increase in daily car traffic, even during peak hours, I imagine?
That's correct.
That's a 24-hour period?
Yes, 24-hour period.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nielsen?
In terms of the pedestrian path that goes from, I believe that's Sumner, Sumner to Seabright, was that, was that requested by the community or was that, I mean, in the beginning process? Just curious where that came from.
The way the plans were drawn is there was a gate over that. It allowed, it was an emergency access gate, and it covered the walkway, so there wouldn't have been pedestrian access. Our condition requires that they provide it.
But there, but that's what's being proposed, is pedestrian access through there? Is there public pedestrian access going through the site?
No, it's going to be a private property, and what we're doing is trying to allow public access through the site.
Okay, so when you say public access, you just mean for emergency vehicle access?
Pedestrians.
From the public?
There will be emergency vehicle access if needed, but the condition that we're suggesting is for pedestrian access through the site. And that came from city staff. We looked at, that's a pretty big block, and we felt there's a number of general plan policies that would support something like that, since it's a lot that goes through two streets, and there's a lot of neighborhood commercial serving uses to the south. So the recommendation based on those general plan policies was for that public access.
And so it's open, it will, it's open to the public, so anybody can cross through there is what, okay. And one of the drawings I saw, it didn't, it looked like there was an auto gate that's there that will be locked, but it didn't appear that there was a, like, a gate for the public to get through, and that path looked like it was actually stopped at that auto gate, so...
That's how the plans are drawn.
How do, I mean, how is that access happening then?
They're going to have to revise the gates so that it allows pedestrian access right here.
Okay.
So we don't want, we don't want it to be a vehicle shortcut, but we do want pedestrians to be able to use it. It saves about 1,000 feet, I think, if you live on Sumner here instead of walking all the way up the block and down.
So we don't want, we don't want it to be a vehicle shortcut, but we do want pedestrians to be able to use it.
Okay.
It saves about 1,000 feet, I think, if you live on Sumner here, instead of walking all the way up the block and down. I think I measured that, and it was about 1,000 feet. So that could be the difference between jumping in a car and just walking down to the commercial areas.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, was it required by the city, or by, by staff to, to provide this material articulation and changes in material on the project? Because it doesn't appear that that's really, has happened in the drawing, so I'm just curious. It seemed like it was a requirement within, it was a request, possibly from the public during that initial meeting, but then also it looked like it was a requirement from staff, but I haven't seen that on these drawings, so...
Neither have I. That's, that's why we added that condition of approval.
Okay. So then the, so then it will be, it's going to be up to, what point do you review that? When are you going to get that information? And when do you expect to be reviewing that?
Depends on what happens tonight. If you approve it with that condition, then it would be up to us. I suppose you could continue it and ask to see the changes.
We've also done, as you recall, on a couple of the larger downtown projects, we've also had planning commission subcommittees to, to look at some of the details.
I think that's it at the moment, thank you.
Other questions before we go to Commissioner Schiffern?
Just wanted to clarify the commission's action. We're essentially making a recommendation to the council. This will automatically go to the council because there's a tentative map, is that...
Yes.
Is my understanding correct? Okay. Were there any heritage trees on the site?
No.
There were trees in the back area. I couldn't determine whether they were heritage trees or not, but there seemed to be some trees back there.
Yeah, that was, that's a required, that's required as part of the tentative map, so I didn't see any on the tentative map.
Any other questions? So we'll now invite the members of the public to address the commission on this. Could you raise your hand if you'd like to address us, so I can get a sense of how many? Okay. Based on that, we'll let everyone speak for three minutes each, and we invite you to line up on the right side of the room. If everyone would line up, it helps facilitate the, the meeting flow. And sign your name on the, on, sign in, please, and address the commission with your name, if you're willing. Everyone will have three minutes to speak, and the lights in front of you will go from green and then yellow when you're near the end, and then, and then it'll be, it'll turn red when you're done, and it'll beep. So I will invite you to please stop then. I hate to be rude, but we try to keep things going and balance receiving your input with also keeping the meeting going. We'll ask everyone to be quiet while you are speaking, and then we'll ask you to please be quiet when others are speaking, including even if you agree with folks, don't cheer, because if, imagine if you're the dissenting voice amongst a bunch of folks who don't agree with you, you might feel stifled and you won't share your opinion. And we want, I hope you agree, we want all opinions to be heard tonight. So please be silent while others are speaking, and they'll be silent when you're speaking. Are you ready, Tess? So we'll open the public hearing. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Scott Harriman. I'm a local resident. I live on Wyndham, just around the corner. I wanted to take a few moments, and I'll be daring and be the first person to speak. So to start with, I will tell you that I am not against development. I'm a retired city planner, and I've seen lots of development throughout my 30-year career. What I'm here to do is suggest some possible design modifications to better integrate with the neighbor. In addition, I'm really quite familiar with the work of, of the Van Alstine Group, and they have done some incredibly wonderful projects in our neighborhood. So I'm not, I'm not against the development team too, because they're local and they do a great job. What I am here to do is to tell you about our neighborhood. Here's an, an aerial of it. It's a predominantly context to smaller building masses, individual building footprints, there's some unique architecture in the characteristics of the community. There are trees of scale throughout the neighborhood. There are larger buildings have room for larger trees. We've also seen some new buildings with increased heights and density. So we're familiar with the development occurring in our yard, in our neighborhood. What I'm here to do is, I have six suggestions, and these are in the order that I believe are of importance. The first one is breaking the building into two smaller pieces, or two pieces. I'm not suggesting they lose density. We understand that density is very important these days, but you can break the buildings up without losing density, so with or without density loss. Provide additional large-scale trees, reduce the building heist, improve access to the rear yards for the units, improve the driveway surface material, and eliminate planter strips in the driveway. This is the, the elevation, as it currently shows, it's typically, it's one long unbroken elevation. The building spans from the front to the rear with uninterrupted building, building mass. There are minimal opportunities for trees of scale, and there are two guest parking stalls. This is not a development pattern that, that really transfers well to other sites, because if you fill the entirety of your site within the building envelope with building, it doesn't provide much room to do much else with it. So we would say that this is not a, a good building pattern to transfer. Here's what we're suggesting for the building mass. I've taken the elevations that the, the applicant has shown, and I've broken it up into two pieces. So there are, there are eight. These are the same width buildings, and so we've got more, this is more consistent with the neighborhood. It adds room in the middle of the building for larger-scale trees. It adds more end units, which have greater light and visit, light and air, and it may provide areas for additional guest parking, as you can see in between there. This is a photo montage that they've provided. They have left out the trees in the front, however, they didn't include the ramping, as Mike talked about. Oh, jeez, I'm sorry.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. I have provided you all of my comments on this, and we recommend that any recommendation you make to city council include those recommendations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
May I just pop in?
Welcome.
That guy's a tough act to follow. So, sorry, I had a little outburst earlier, and I just want to apologize for that. So I am the person on Clinton that the garage you speak of is there. So I, I'm just interested in what the easement is going to be there, as far as, I've actually talked to the surveyor that did that, that did the survey, and then he did a survey on my property, and that garage is actually only two feet setback from my property to the, the property line where this is going to come to. So I'm just wondering how far back this is going to be? And then, the only thing I really want to add, and I'm sure everyone else is going to add, is this parking situation is going to be absurd, because there's no room to park in front of the garage, and this is Santa Cruz, and people don't park in their garage. So you're going to have 20 cars out on Sumner, and I know people that live on Sumner, and they're really worried about it. And then when you get to Windham, I've lived on Glenview Street, which is right down the road. Windham, if there's two cars coming together, one of them has to pull over just so the other one can pass, and that's going to be the access point from Sumner. And then Seabright, I know that block as well, there's never any parking right there. So it's, so parking is a real, real worry for this place. So I just wanted to put that out there for you guys, and I'm going to give up the rest of my minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For your benefit and for everyone else, I should have shared, it doesn't, it's not going to feel like a dialogue, because we won't have a conversation with you, but offer your questions however you would, and then in our discussion, we'll aim to address them.
Okay. Just one other thing is, as far as I know, so I had it, I got a flyer, said they're going to make it 36 feet tall, and as far as I knew with a residential, you can't go that high in Santa Cruz County. I always thought, I'm, I'm a building contractor, and as far as I know, you can only go 29 feet. That's going to be, I'm not sure how that works, but, and once again, you know, I'm all for development, and I'm for them developing this, and for you guys developing this. It just seems like it's a real high impact with absolutely no room for open space, zero.
Thank you. Welcome.
My name is Sage, and I live on 527 Sumner Street with the rainbow-colored chicken coop that you saw on the slide. I'm, I'm pretty devastated by this plan. It feels like Motel 6 is moving right next door to me. It is a huge block, 36 feet tall. We were told 30 feet tall, and I think there was some assumption that we would know at that public meeting that 30 feet tall didn't actually mean 30 feet tall. And that was upsetting to me, because I didn't know three stories at that time. So I just found out this past week, no, we're going to be looking at 36 feet of building, because my house isn't on, it doesn't face Sumner Street, it is actually turned to the side. So my living room window, my bedroom double doors are all going to be looking at this building. That's just my personal problem. I am kind of offended by this project. This is in no way meeting the housing plan's request for affordable housing. These units are very large, each bedroom has its own bathroom. There is no way these are going to be affordable. These are going to be, my guess is rented for $5,000 a month, at least, maybe more. The units that he was showing you, the examples of, rent for $4,600 a month. They are smaller, and, and so you do the math. Okay, two-bedroom garage, I mean, two-car garage for three bedrooms in a, in units that either very well-to-do college students will be renting, which means they'll have six, seven kids per unit, or Silicon Valley vacationers, right? If it's them, okay, they won't need more parking, but if it's six, seven college students, where are they going to put their cars? It seems like a stupid thing to care about, but I have to park on Wyndham fairly regularly. Sumner Street is completely packed at night. So this is actually a living problem for us, and what he, the other guy said about Wyndham, I come out of Sumner every day, and I have to like, try to make sure that I can get out. You can't, it's a very narrow street. Okay, I don't even want to focus on that. I am also pro-development. I think we have a terrible housing problem here, and I was, I've always known that this lot would eventually be developed. It's just the way this is happening is not in keeping with all the outcry in Santa Cruz, and all the need that we have. We've, I've lost three good friends, families who've had to leave the area because they can't afford to be here, and these units are going to be out of most people's reach. Okay? I am, there's been, for me, there's been some misinformation. I was told that we would not be shaded. I think my partner's going to talk about that more. It looks to me like not just December 21st, or 30, whatever that date was, the solstice or something, but for many months of the year, my property is going to be in some deep shade, a good amount of my property. I don't understand that disconnect there. Anyway, I would, last thing I want to say is, there's a lot of things you don't understand if you don't go and see our neighborhood. So I really would ask all of you to drive over and walk around and take a look at what is there and what this is going to do to us.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Catherine Norton. I live on James Street, which is just across from this development. So I'm opposed to this development at Seabright Avenue, because it would detract from the neighborhood feeling of Seabright, and would impose upon the numerous small bungalows that currently reside there. I live in a 1,500, sorry, 1,400-square-foot house, so this is significantly bigger. The addition of this many units would add to the congestion of Seabright. And as a resident of James Street, I am well aware of the amount of cars that back up onto Seabright on a daily basis. I also commute from San Jose, so I understand at the end of the day, people are very frustrated, and they just want to get home. The addition of a nine-unit development would bring exponentially more traffic, not only to Seabright, but to the surrounding streets as well. Oftentimes, cars race down my small wind block, straight, trying to avoid traffic, making it dangerous for my student, my children to play outside. Seabright Avenue is not safe for bicyclists, and the sidewalks are not safe for pedestrians. There's limited parking, almost no crosswalks, and the sidewalks are in poor condition. The proposed development would compound parking problems and congestion. To echo some of the other comments, parking for this development is a big concern, as people don't typically park in their garages, and guest parking is very limited. I understand the need for more housing in Santa Cruz, however, packing in a nine-unit development on this property seems careless and unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
My name is Fred Aaron. I live at 527 Sumner with Sage there. We're facing this new development. And during the public meeting we had previously, it was discussed about the shading. We were told that it wasn't going to shade our property. We went ahead and designed an additional dwelling unit. We're going to have solar panels that are five feet in the setback from that fence, and given the shading that it looked like, I couldn't really tell from there, it looks like it would be covering up now the solar panels that we were going to install on that side. So we were told it was 30 feet, and I always thought, oh, 30 feet's going to be okay, where the sun's not going to bother it, but now we know it's 36, and we see the shading results, it looks like we're not going to be able to put in solar panels on our additional dwelling unit. I just also wanted to say about the public meeting we had, there was a lot of pushback against the pedestrian access, mostly for the same reason that everyone's been talking about, is that we're worried that it's going to lead to more parking on people parking their cars in the Sumner and just walking into their houses, or guests doing that. And just like everybody else here, I have to park a block away from my own house, and often, because we don't have any onsite parking. So I'm definitely concerned about that as well. And it's, just like everyone else has said too, it's, it is a very large, it's just a single, just big building that doesn't fit in with the neighborhood at all. Those are for that reason as well. That's all, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Gail Jack, and I'm with the Affordable Housing Now Task Force in the city of Santa Cruz. I, I think, I hear what the neighbors are saying. I don't live that close to this site, but I think the project is just overwhelmingly large for this neighborhood. But our concern is more about it's not affordable housing, and that's what we need in the city. We've just had a report on our, where we are in the housing element. We are way, way behind in the number of low and very low-income units we have to build by 2023. And we are far above the number of units have, that have been built for market-rate, moderate-rate housing. So this is just a bad use, I believe, of this property. You could build much smaller units, you could build a two-story building that maybe wouldn't overwhelm the neighborhood so badly. I'm not a builder, I can't, I won't even go into that, but I just want to remind the commission about our need for very low and low-income housing in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Evan Surkey. So I got two mathematical ideas I'd like to share with you all. So first off, 1 is greater than 0. Today, there are zero affordable units on this property. There's no, I asked Mike Ferry, he said there's no deed-restricted affordable units on the property. There will be one deed-restricted affordable on the property after the project. Second thing, 9 is greater than 3. This is six more families or households that'll be able to live in our community. This is an opportunity for more neighbors, and, you know, I understand concerns about traffic, solar panels, shade, not really shade, I like shade. But like, where's the priority here for having housing for people in a housing crisis? In a housing shortage, you need to build more housing to get out of a housing shortage. This does it. And it's already at like, close to the maximum density that's possible. So like, sure, you could build more units if you change the zoning or something, that'd be great. Go ahead. Go ahead and like, get a zoning exemption and build 40 units there with like, you know, make like, each story like, have like, one unit. That's cool, but that's not what zoning allows. So this is a zoning-compliant project. It has an affordable unit where there's no, that exists today. And you got to approve it. Like this is, there's like, state law, this is like, if there's a housing project that meets your zoning laws, you got to approve it. Otherwise, you could face penalties for not approving it. So approve it.
Thank you for your comments. Please be quiet while others, I guess, other people are addressing the commission. Most folks were quiet, quiet when everyone else has addressed the commission. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ruth Miller, and I live at 911 Seabright, which is directly across from the proposed development. So when I look out my front window, that's what I'm going to see. So that's part of my investment in it, but I'm also invested in the neighborhood. I'm not going to reiterate the things that I've said. I think it is out of scale for the neighborhood. It doesn't fit in. Yes, you can go down to big condos, two blocks down, much closer to the beach. I think you have to decide as a commission, is that what you want to see on Seabright? Because are, is that the intent going forward? If you approve this, then what will happen with the next one? If you approve this, then what will happen with the next one? Because right now, it's pretty much single-family homes in that block and some of the previous blocks. There are some apartments that are a little bit larger, but for the most part, they blend in. You were asking about the percent, 1% more trips in terms of traffic. It isn't, I don't think the trips and traffic as much as it's the parking. Because I, when I open my car door, if there are, I can't open my car door, let's put it that way, when I park on the street. And if there's traffic across, if there's parking across the street, neither one of us can open our doors and you can't fit two cars going down Seabright in the middle lanes when cars are parked on either side. I have witnessed slowdowns with response for emergency vehicles by both, looking out my front window, I can see the big fire trucks coming down. And if there's traffic backed up, which there often is, particularly in the popular hours for the beach, they can't get through. And so they're slowing down their response time now. The answer isn't to go onto Sumner, but it's certainly not to go onto Seabright. And when I ask about, I've called and I've said, so what's the plan? I don't get a plan for how you can mitigate the parking. And these units, if you look at the design, bottom floor, own bedroom, two on the top floor, it's not going to be a family. There's no little kids that are going to be separated from their moms and be away. Those units are designed to have at least four to six adults living in them. You're not talking about two cars and two car garages. You have to be realistic about what the design is and what the, both the need for housing, but it's also the need for parking for the people who live there. And they're going to need that. So it's like, where do those go? They got to go somewhere. And I can tell you, Seabright's hugely impacted in a really, I think, unsafe way around the parking situations, especially with, I have experienced it. And you don't even have cyclists going down the road, you have them using the sidewalk because they can't, it's too narrow there. So we have a lot of issues around that that haven't been addressed. And I keep hearing, all the concerns have been addressed, it's like, uh, nope, not this one. So, and I don't know who to turn to anymore. Talking to you, talking to the plan, you know, it's like, do you go to Public Works? No, you go to the city council? Okay. So, you know, it's, I'd love an answer to that, or at least some ideas around that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Welcome. My name is Jane Mio and I lived since 72 in the Seabright area. I would like to talk about the spirit of the Seabright area. It has been documented that it's unique because of its small neighborhood, it's community-oriented. And I quite frankly, am greatly disturbed to see how slowly the Seabright area is being literally barricaded and choked. Slowly, the house levels are going up. First, it was like, oh, it's just 28 feet. We turned, we opposed that. We turned around to find it's up to 30 feet, 33. And one of the things is that these units that are being built are ghettos. The people that live in these big buildings that are like their own unit, they don't really come out and mix with our, with the rest of the community, the neighborhood. It's starting to get really segregated and ghettoed. And the barricading look is imprisoning us. And you can't allow that. So new development is fine within a concept, but it cannot destroy what historically always has been celebrated as a good neighborhood. So that is my say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
My name is David Hill and I live in the 900 block of Seabright. We'll be directly next to the proposed development. And I, I know that 57 trips doesn't sound like a lot, but we have a situation in Seabright where it's nine units here, six units there, four units here, 10 units there. The cumulative effect of all this development is radically changing the, the traffic patterns. If you look at the pictures that were shown to us during the day of the number of cars parked, that's a fraction of the number of cars that are parked in the evenings and at night. And, and then to go, one last point is they said that they wanted to break up the mass. Well, I'm all for breaking up the mass, but you don't bring up the mass by changing the paint color. You break up the mass by not having as much mass. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Oh, good evening. Greg Bengson. I, I did live in the Ross camp. However, I've also lived in a $22,000 a month flat in London. Affordable housing, yeah, it's essential, but I can see both sides where the, the sense of a neighborhood is essential and trying to force something that doesn't belong just for development or for meeting certain abstract points. The main thing is, is, is almost something intangible, the feeling of a neighborhood. And that's what's so cool about when you walk through parts of Santa Cruz. And that's probably why I'll probably go back to being back in venture capital and not just hanging out with, with the wild bunch. I used to go to lots of planning commission meetings down in Monterey County, but this is my first one here. I just love the city and I'm not going to live in Ross camp anymore. I'm going to start moving back up, but it's because it's a cool place and thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your comments. Welcome.
Good evening. You know, I lived in the, the area for three years when I was a poor student, so I'm very familiar with it. It's in a lovely neighborhood and it's always been very endearing to me. It's part of the roots of my living in Santa Cruz and staying here. It hasn't been mentioned tonight that this is a 277.5 feet building, continuous. It's a massive building. It's over 1.04. The downtown update plan was allowing only 200 feet until the last rendition, when it was deleted because they wanted to put a hotel at the corner of Soquel and Front, so that was removed. But otherwise, there was a 200 feet restriction and here it's 277.5 feet in a neighborhood. When people think of two and a half stories, they think it's two and a half stories. And so people are always surprised when something is three stories. And this whole idea of the, you know, the midline roof and it's actually higher than that, I always joke, everything will be derweiner traditional roofs in the future for that reason. But these are all very deceptive ways of getting around different issues with, with the neighborhood and their understanding of what this project really is. And so ultimately, the general plan can allow you pretty much to build anything as long it's within the number of units and the density. And you can ignore many of the other amenities that are there for the neighborhood. And until there is some kind of design review board, which there even was, my understanding in the 70s, I just came across it and was kind of surprised to find that there was a design review board with three community members, architect, landscaper, and then they also added a building contractor for technical expertise. And Derek is a very well-known architect. He's built fine homes, but when it comes to infill developments, a very different type of project. And so he's in a learning curve, basically, and he's trying, and so yes, he's having to go through this iteration because he's having to think through things that he may not have ever thought before. And as far as affordable housing, the ones down the street, they're still open for rent. They've been available for a while. They've never been fully rented at $4,600. I figured these will probably be about $5,500 because it's about 900 square feet bigger. We haven't included the HOA fees. If you look at it, 30%, it's probably $220,000 with the AOA, HOA fees, it'd probably be about $236,000. And that would be, what would be accommodate for that kind of unit. As far as affordable, when you say 80%, it's actually 80 to 120%, so that's what they call moderate. But essentially, it's not really affordable because it's at over $3,000. And for most people, that's not affordable at all. So basically, everybody here has made really great recommendations. I think Alison Russell's recommendations were great. They're in there. I would certainly hope that you would look at that and decline this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Has anyone else like to address the commission as last chance right now? Okay, thank you for coming tonight and for sharing your views with us. I'd like to invite the applicant back up to address the commission with any rebuttal or responses to public comment or other, other things you want to share with us. Do we usually limit applicant testimony?
Or rebuttal time?
Okay.
It's, it's chair's discretion.
Okay. How about 10 minutes?
I'll probably take less than 10 minutes.
Okay.
I hardly know where to start. I think that if you look at the big picture, we need all types of housing, not just low or affordable housing. We need affordable housing for all income brackets. And it may be that we're, you know, we're ahead of the game for high, the higher income brackets. Now I can understand that. There are, and I forget the name of it, but there are enterprise zones that, that make allowances and, and set aside, and have set asides for development that helps you do those types of units. This, this property doesn't happen to be one of those properties that enjoys the set asides. And it's very hard to do low income or low to moderate income units, more of them, without having some gives and, and some asks as, as you go through the process. The, I understand the, the comments regarding getting more definition in, in the buildings. I think we can work towards that. There's not a whole lot of room to work with it, but there's some certainly, and we can certainly change materials and we can change colors and maybe find places to put more trees. I think that we can, we can soften the exterior of the buildings. There is, is quite a bit of definition actually in the building now. It doesn't show up in 2D plans, but when you see the building in 3D, there, there are a lot of offsets. And so they'll, they'll create, those offsets will create shadow lines that'll help break up the building some. Yes, it's a very large, a very long building. It is, I think, well articulated as, as much as it can be. Maybe we can find some other ways to, to help mitigate those concerns. We made a, we made a conscious effort early on in this project to not only provide parking, but provide all the parking except for the two spaces as covered parking so that we didn't have cars out, out in the public view shot. That's been successfully done. There's the library, I think it's called Library Lane, which was a little project around the corner from my office that did just that. And it's, it works just fine. It's, it's about the same number of units, about eight units. It has two parking spaces for, for guests and there are, you never see cars parked there because everybody uses their garage. We provided more than the required amount of space so that people had space to put surfboards and bicycles and the accoutrements of daily life in Santa Cruz. So, you know, there's, there's a place to, to hang your wet suits. There's a place to, to, you know, store your bikes and your surfboards. This doesn't involve the garage space. The, there was a suggestion made to increase access to the backyards. I think we could work with that. I think we could play with that so that, that it is more invite, is more inviting. One of the things we did was we provided space for the trashcans because we didn't want trashcans outside. We want this to be a, a real clean and neighborly friendly project. There was, there, there's been quite a bit of discussion about the, the pedestrian access through, through the property. It's not something that we particularly support. Some of the neighbors do and some don't. There was quite a bit of sentiment at, at the public meeting with the neighbors regarding having access through. And, and my feeling from that meeting was that the neighbors were not supporting that even though the, the, under the regulations that you've cited, they are encouraged. It might be a good thing to look at not having that cut through so that the people that are on the cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac feel like they're still on the cul-de-sac. Or it might be good to open it up and, and have pedestrian access. But it's a, it's a discussion that we still need to have, I think. I'd encourage you to approve this project as it complies with all the regulations and applies, and it complies with the general plan. And we were very careful to, to, to design it that way so that we would minimize the amount of turbulence that we have to go through to get, to get approved. So with that, I'll relinquish my time.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I've got a couple of questions. Mr. Nielsen?
Did, just, I have a question, I have a couple of questions. Did you explore breaking the building into two masses?
Actually, early on, there were more than two divisions in the buildings. What happened was fire absolutely, absolutely demanded that they have 20 feet of clear access all the way through the property. That, that put the kibosh on, on, on that space that we had to be able to work the buildings back and forth. That was a, that was a bitter pill to swallow at the time. But we completely revised the, the plans for this project based on fire's requirements.
And based, and I'm, and specifically Scott Harriman's presentation showed an intimate of the building broken into two pieces with parking in between. Did you, were you able to see that? I have it in, in front of me, so I wasn't sure if I actually made it up on the screen or not. Did you see that?
Yes, yes. And he also gave me one of his handouts, so that was really great.
I get, my question is, do you find, would that be feasible to do that?
I don't think it's feasible. The reason is that we, you know, we're, we're really using the rear yard setback or the, we're using the setback off of Sumner for the, for the guest parking. If we, we've already reduced the buildings, the building widths to such an extent that they just encapsulate the garages and the entries on the first floor. We had to go through the, after this last meeting, after the public meeting, we went through and we took a foot out of each, each unit on all three floors. So we basically redesigned the building in order to pull the building further back off of Seabright, do the entry on Seabright and put the parking in the rear, which was in, in response to the public comments. What I'm getting to here is that if you push the building apart, you really have to use that for the parking, for the guest parking. It might be possible, I mean, I'd be happy to look at it, it might be possible to have the parking ahead of, in the middle, the two parking spaces with, with a tree and planting ahead of the parking spaces. There might be room to do that. It's possible.
Okay, thank you. And in terms of the, the accessibility at the, at the front of the lot and then where the ramps are?
Yes.
So that's, is, that's taking care of your, the requirement for accessibility from public right away?
Yes.
And you have two, there are potential of two access points for, for your entry. I would assume that you could, you could have access from Sumner. If you, if this public, if there's a public way that comes in from Sumner, then, and I guess I'm bringing it up just because you're, there's a lot of space used in the front for this ramp and to get up to that grade. And so I'm curious if you looked at using access from the back from Sumner?
I'd, I'd love to do away with the ramp in the front. I, I don't like it. I, you know, they, when you have to zigzag a, a ramp like that, it eats up so much territory that, that it tends to be ugly unless you can disguise it in some way. So I'd be happy to look at, at doing it from the back. That may be, that may have to be included in the, in this pedestrian access.
Right. I mean, you would, you would need to have access through, I mean, from, from, from Sumner.
Exactly. And you'd have to have a clear path of travel, which is what we're doing to the, to the front, to Seabright.
Right, understood. I get, okay, another question since you're here. I didn't see any sections of the building in the plans that we have. Can you explain what the ceiling height is on the upper floor? How that works?
I'm Mike Tinsley, I work in Derek's office. So, perfect. So as you look at this elevate, at the Seabright elevation, see the, looking at the top floor where it says top of subfloor, top of plate is where it says 3.6, and then it slopes up from there. There are, those are typically within either closets or in the stairway area. And then where it's over bedrooms, there are dormers that would give a full eight, eight-foot ceiling. So it might be best to look at the long elevation where you can see the roofs coming down.
What's the, okay, go ahead, go ahead.
So the plate line, the plate line generally is for the main roof is at three foot six. Then the bedrooms and the bathrooms are dormered in order to get them to fit under the roof line.
Yeah, I understand, I understand how that works. I'm just curious what the, what your ceiling, and it'd be great if I had a section. I mean, and I feel like sections should be a requirement that the city asked for, along with the site sections that we've asked for as well. But it's really hard to understand what that ceiling height is, especially when we're hearing comment about the height of the building and trying to get an understanding for, you know, how much height really is in that space? And is it, is that something that can be addressed and adjusted in some way?
Sure, we can, we can look at that and we can look at maybe the, on the roof or something like that. But generally, where there are dormers, there are dormers at the bedrooms, bedrooms and bathrooms. And then where the roof slopes down to the 3.6 is over stairways.
Right, and my, just generally, my, basically my question is, are we ending up with ceiling heights in the upper floor bedrooms that are exceeding, you know, exceeding kind of a standard height?
They're, it's set at an eight-foot ceiling.
You have a flat ceiling in there, or is it vaulted?
Flat, mm-hmm.
I think that's it for my questions at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So... Mr. Spelman, would you like to start the general discussion amongst the commission?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I'm going to start this like I start most of my design permit responses. Unfortunately, the drawing standards that are, the city requirement are woefully insufficient to analyze this project. What's missing from, there's not a site plan that shows buildings either side of this project. I mean, that is incredible that that's even allowed to be presented without that information, quite frankly. At a minimum, any adjacent parcel that touches this property should have its structures designated on it with heights, et cetera. There should be site sections, north, south, east, west, so we can understand the relationship of this building to the surrounding buildings, to the street edge. Those are just the basics. I'm glad you produced a rendering, but it turns out that that building is four foot short, apparently, right? There's a four-foot grade difference in that rendering, right? The build, the front door is four feet higher than the sidewalk, and it's not that way in that rendering, which leads me to question, so what is the height and what is the context? What is the relationship? It leads me to question the solar study. What is the basis of performing that study? Can we rely on the accuracy of the information? That's just not okay, in my opinion, that we stand here and analyze this with insufficient information. That's not meant to be just a direct accusation of you. This is an ongoing issue that the city needs to address. But this is, this is an important project. It's a big project being proposed in a neighborhood. And we don't get the chance to fully analyze the context around it. That being said, I do want to also acknowledge the public correspondence on this project. And engagement has been very involved and I think very engaging and forthright with what they dislike about the project and coming forward with ideas that could potentially make it more amenable to the neighborhood. So I want to thank everyone for that. It doesn't always go that way. And I think everyone's done a great job of trying to contribute constructive criticism to this project. On the face of it, the figure ground drawing on page one, your vicinity map shows, you know, the size of this building in comparison to buildings around it. Not even in the short vicinity, but in the much larger vicinity. This building is substantially larger than anything else. The figure ground of the 276-foot building, continuous with no break, is just unprecedented anywhere close to this. You know, so I think there's, that's a problem. I don't think articulating facades or changing materials is going to come anywhere close to resolving that. I think there's got to be, if not one, two major breaks in this building. I also question the 36-foot height resolution. I think this project is an evolution of our 30-foot to the midpoint requirement. I think we've come up against this issue several times where projects are higher than the 30, people don't understand it. Does it meet the intent of the code? Yes, by manipulating those roof forms and getting an average roof height of 30 feet, it meets the intent of that code. I think it shows us that that code is not doing us any favors at this point, and it needs to be relooked at. Other municipalities have come up against that same issue. The code and people playing by the rules, design projects that are substantially different than I think the intent of what that code is saying. You know, so I don't want to even get into the minutia of the design of this because I think it's not close to an approvable design, in my opinion. There are a lot of ways to create nine lots or nine units on this property and not have the massing that this project has. You could design nine individual buildings with proper setbacks between those buildings and have nine units. Three stories, about 1,800 square feet per unit. That was the quick math that I did, but that's, that's real. So I, you know, let me find out what else I've got on here. So I do appreciate two comments about, you know, we've met the full intent of the code. We're not asking for any permissions here. We've just, we've designed to the code. And I think the design permit and the relationship to the general plan is one where we've fallen a little bit short as well. It's not enough to meet the zoning codes for this building. There are other relationship and character issues that have to also be addressed and assume are compatible with existing contexts. It doesn't mean we're building single-story, single-family homes on this property, but we are respecting a character in this neighborhood that unfortunately this project doesn't do. There's no articulation of the front facade or back facade that's going to, you know, make this building smaller. It's going to create some more shadow lines and do different things, but it's not going to reduce the massing of this building. I also question the kind of imposition of all of the balconies that face south and the properties, you know, off of Clinton. You've now put, you know, every single balcony, which doesn't show accurately on the site plan. The site plan shows the garage and I guess the bump outs for the bathrooms, but it doesn't show the outline of the balconies, whichever, at least potentially five feet from that property line, if the property line we're drawing on the drawing we're looking at on the screen now. So we now have, you know, all the residents that are in that building all hanging out where you would want them if that's your building facing south and enjoying the sun, but also just imposing on those neighbors. So I would think there's a way to articulate the imposition of that open space on adjoining properties. Yeah, I think that's enough at the moment. I'd like to hear what other people are hearing, are feeling.
Mr. Schifrin?
Yes, I have a number of comments and agree with a lot of what was, a lot of what was just said. I would like to read a couple of statements from the general plan because I think what was in the staff report provided one perspective. And I think the general plan has other policies as well that we should be thinking about. In terms of the guiding principles, one of the guiding principles is neighborhood integrity and housing. We will maintain the identity and vitality of our neighborhoods, actively pursuing affordable housing for diversity of households and promoting compatible livability and high-quality design in new buildings, major additions, and redevelopment. Policy CD 2.1, protect and enhance the distinctive physical and design characteristics of neighborhoods and districts throughout the city. I think I have two follow-up concerns about this project really related to that. It seems to me it is so out of scale with what's around it that it really does fundamentally change the characteristic of that neighborhood. Having gone out there, looked at the site, saw that the two units, the three units are in front of the site. There's a big open area at the back of the site. I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary to have this kind of impact on the site. I do want to ask a question to follow up on one of the statements, which I didn't think, I don't think is correct, where a speaker said that we have to approve this project because it's within the general plan density. My understanding is the city would have to approve a project that is somewhere within that general plan density, but not at the highest end necessarily. Am I understanding that correctly in terms of what the state law requires? If it requires anything?
I'm not sure exactly which bill he's talking about. I mean, there are some that are currently active that speak to building within the density. I don't know the exact wording. I know there is some pending legislation that might make certain multifamily developments allowable by right.
I think that was defeated today.
But it's, they're bills that we're tracking.
I guess my concern is that there seems to be a tendency to really overdensify sites. I think this is, that doesn't mean that there can't be additional density on the site. I'm not sure that it really makes sense to feel that it has to, the site has to hold a maximum density, especially when it means losing three existing housing units. And while they may not be restricted to in an affordable way, they're certainly going to be, they're going to be available at a much lower price than the new units are going to be as proposed by this project. So to provide a diversity of housing, I think it seems to me a real shame to lose these housing, the existing housing that's there. They fit into the neighborhood really well. And that whole block really has a certain quality to it that I think it would be a shame to lose by overdensifying the site with this, what seems to me to be a very massive structure. I kind of hate saying all these things in a way because I'm a friend of Derek Van Alstine. I've known him for years. I really like him. And I appreciate the work that was done. But I think the basic assumption is an assumption I don't think is a necessary one, which is we must have as much density as possible. Because we have a housing crisis, nothing else matters except getting as many housing units as we can. If it means destroying the quality of the neighborhood, so be it. And I think that this project really represents that attitude. And I think it really undermines the integrity of the general plan, that understands the need to try to protect the quality of life in the community by having a respect for the neighborhoods that are there. And I think that it is, like my colleague said, possible to redesign a project for this site that would increase the density and not overdensify the site, not be detrimental to the neighborhood. So my recommendation is that we send the project back for redesign within the density range, but at a lower end and at a, and in a way that preserves the existing housing on the site.
Mr. Conway?
So I, first of all, I also want to thank everybody who came out. And everyone's been really articulate. I also love this neighborhood. Lived on James Street, lived on Bronson, lived on Owen Street. My brother lived on Sumner, pretty much next door. One of the things I'd like to say, and have spent a lot of time in this neighborhood, is the connectivity within the neighborhood is something that is really lacking on the east side. And I think it was a fashionable planning trend to require everyone to be in cars for a long time. And there are certain neighborhoods, and I think especially on the east side, the ones that I know where you just have these long stretches that really, I mean, someone said it, people take a car when it wouldn't be very hard to go over to, from Sumner over to Angkor Pizza Works if you could walk, you know, on a pedestrian walkway through there. And I think it would be a real enhancement for the neighborhood. So I am very strongly in support of that feature. I also can appreciate how much the design makes, would make neighbors concerned about spillover parking and that that makes it seem like it would be worse. I do believe that connectivity in the end can reduce car trips. And so I think that's important. I wanted to thank the architect for how hard they've worked to make this building interesting looking. The articulation, the variation in the windows. I'm not an architect, but I'm just looking at it and I see that there's a, there's a real attempt to make it do that. But I agree, it is a big, long building. It feels like it imposes. I wonder about kind of, you know, a little, I'm both agreeing and disagreeing with you, I think, Andy, is, I, for one, I do think the existing houses are going to go. You know, I think that's going to happen. And we should demand that we get the best possible project. I wonder if you considered, rather than having such big units, having more smaller units. You could apply for a density bonus. You could get, in that way, I think, make less of a, just that physical impact of bigness and meet some housing goals. It would also allow for, it's also a tool for getting some greater deed-restricted affordability, which a lot of people have said we need to do. In a project of this size, we don't have a lot of tools that allow us to do that. This is, these are projects that are privately built, and we need to make them pencil. We don't want to condition a project to the point where it's impossible to build it. And I can see that all of the departments, the designers, they're trying to serve a lot of, a lot of rules and coming from a lot of different sources. serve a lot of, a lot of rules, and coming from a lot of different sources. So, I think we need housing projects that add units, and I think the changes in neighborhoods are going to be happening incrementally, but we need to make them done, you know, careful. This, the massing of this building really feels hard, hard to take, despite the benefits that, that have gone along with it. So, I guess I, I feel like it's, it's a good project, it's going to be a good project, and it doesn't feel like it's quite there for our lovely neighborhood.
Mr. Spellman?
Yeah, I want to echo some of that, too. I also, you know, I know Derek's office and his work, and I know he will do a stellar job with this project as it moves forward. I just think, you know, I'm all for the density, I'm not suggesting that we take units out, but I think the building needs more than just a little work, it needs some substantial work to, to get a massing that's going to be compatible. And that may mean losing a few bedrooms potentially on, on some of the buildings, so then maybe they're not three stories, or, you know, there's a lot of ways to do it, I think, but it's, it's going to take something fairly substantial, I think.
Mr. Singleton?
Yeah. I, just to preface my comments, I'm definitely more aligned kind of with Commissioner Conway's remarks and overarching need, big-picture stuffs. I won't comment on the size of the building more than's already been said, it's not a small building, it's a big, big structure. I do think it's out of character with the neighborhood. I think we're probably going to see a lot more developments like this, given the zoning constraints we have. I 100% agree, I'd like to see a lot more units that are smaller and denser, that would definitely be better. And that would perhaps aid in the breaking up of the facade and, and the architectural elements that we've all spoken at length about. I was really dismayed, just hear a lot of assumptions from the audience about who their neighbors might end up being, regardless of what gets built here, making assumptions about small things like habits with the garage and who's going to use them, you know, it's whatever, saying that they're not going to hang out or engage with the neighbors. I think it's a, kind of a really pessimistic assumption of your fellow people that might live in Santa Cruz and here, how they're going to get around or use the street. I mean, I know so many people who don't use cars or are really trying to get out of the way of, of being dependent on the automobile, and I think, you know, it's one thing, we, we have the parking requirements, and the developers gone through painstaking means to meet all of them, but just the assumption that everyone's going to drive all the time is how we got into this mess, so, of urban design, so we got to make some concession somewhere about that moving forward. And again, they're going, they're meeting all the parking requirements, so. The other thing, you know, making assumptions that who's going to live there, it's going to be just another Silicon Valley people or college students. Well, you know, there are 19,000 UCSE students in the city of 65,000 people, that's roughly one-third of the people that live in this city. You know, roughly one-third of the people in the city commute over the hill into Silicon Valley every single day. So, if you add those two together, because they are pretty much exclusive, you have two-thirds of the city that are either college students or Silicon Valley tech workers. It's, these aren't like foreign people, they're your neighbors right now, and they have been. Actually, our commuter trends, I just heard from the Chair of the RTC, or not the Chair, the Executive Director, Guy Preston, this morning in a meeting, are, we have around 29,000 car trips a day that come out of Santa Cruz County that go over the hill into San Jose, San Mateo counties. That's actually down from our peak in 2001, and actually 1999, when we had more. So, not only do these folks not knew the Silicon Valley tech workers, but they've been here for 30 years, they've been here longer than I've been here in Santa Cruz. So, just the assumptions that we're making about people, I think, just leave a really sour taste in my mouth, and I had to make a comment about it. Getting on the affordability elements of it, you know, it's conforming with the inclusionary ordinance, there's not a whole lot more you can do in terms of the number of units that we're allowing, the densities we're allowing in the general plan. Frankly, to get more affordable units, you either have to significantly increase the density, lower the size of the units, or provide public subsidy in some way. And, you know, we have a $3.2 million deficit in the city right now, I don't think we're going to be providing a lot of public subsidy for affordable housing, which means it's in the developer to balance the cost to meet that inclusionary ordinance, probably by pricing of the units a little bit higher than they otherwise would be. Also, if we were to tell the developer to go back to the drawing board, do something less dense, that's certainly going to make the end product way more expensive. So, if you're talking about the general plan elements that are referring to affordability, reducing the density of the overall project, it's certainly not going to get you more affordable units. In general, I just say, yeah, the building's big, I don't necessarily like the look of the building, but in terms of the need for housing, in terms of the restrictions the developer's working with, I can understand how we got here, and ultimately, I'd be willing to support the project and the staff recommendation, but I can understand if, if there are other requirements we want to make in terms of helping to break up the facade, other things that we can work with the developer to lessen the impact on the community and, and fit more in line with the neighborhood character. So, just my comments.
Mr. Nielsen, you were next. Commissioner Greenberg, you want after that?
Yeah, I, I was just going to speak probably more to, more to the scale and the size and the mass of this. It is, I mean, it's been said, it's a big building. I, I think, I think if there was a way to break it, you know, as Commissioner Spellman suggested, like, once or twice, or even, you know, if there's a way to, to get multiple buildings on the site to make it work, I, I think that would be, I, I think that would come more into, more of the neighborhood context that we've been talking about with general plan, and get that more in line. The, I think also, one of the ways to do that is to provide a diversity to the housing type, or to the unit type that's being presented here. These are all the same units, they're, they're all three-bedroom units, and if there's, you know, looking at, looking at reducing down some of those units to two-bedroom or one-bedroom, or studio, or something like that, I think we can, maybe there's a way to increase density even on the site, but also, but also kind of reduce the, reduce the overall mass and size of the building, or buildings that would end up on the site. I would, so I would suggest that as a, as a, as a potential redesign option. I think discussions around density, well, first of all, I'll just say, I do live in this neighborhood, so, so, and I, and, you know, I do walk by the site, you know, quite regularly, and, so I understand, and I do understand the, the traffic impacts that, that do happen, and, and also the, you know, some of the impacts that have happened with past development, and, and ones that have met the zoning code specifically, and, and, you know, how they're, they may meet it, but they don't, it's not, it's not a benefit to the, to the neighborhood necessarily. And so, so I see the, so I understand kind of the, the message coming back from the community about that. And, and so, what I was going to say about density is, you know, density, density makes sense in appropriate locations, and, and based on kind of where we're, where we're at with this density, I, I think, I think, I think it could potentially work if we're, if we're able to get this, the building size down. But, you know, when we talk about, you know, increasing density, and, I, I think, you know, going back to our past conversations around corridors, I mean, this is, that's where, that's where we really need to be focusing those efforts, so, you know, just, that's just looking forward to having those discussions in the future. I also would like to thank the public as well, because in this, for this particular project, we, what I noticed was that there was a lot of public feedback that included suggestions, and it wasn't just, I hate this project, and, you know, this can't happen, you know, just, you know, don't, don't allow it. There, we, we got a lot of correspondence with a lot of, with a lot of ideas about how the project could be modified and things to do, that could change. And I, I really do appreciate that because it's far more, or just helps kind of guide us to, to hear suggestions from the public around how things could be different. It's not just about how you don't want it, and, so I, that was, that was something that struck me with the correspondence on this, so I did appreciate that quite a bit. I think that's it for me.
Commissioner Greenberg?
Thanks. Yeah, I really appreciated everyone's comments from the audience and my fellow commissioners. And it does sound like it, there's interestingly kind of interrelated issues in terms of the size and massing of the building, and, you know, affordability issues and the diversity of, of types of units and so forth. One thing I would say, so, you know, it's a question to me, I'm, I'm somebody who's very, you know, pro, generally speaking, density when done right, why it needs to be at this kind of maximum level, to, to a degree that all of the units are also going to be kind of, you know, very high-end and very expensive units? And that if there was more of a diversity in, in the type of units, that could also affect some of these affordability questions. And, you know, the, the questions that are raised by the general plan, and some of our goals as a city, our goals as a commission, is to really encourage that. And I guess I would say, my thinking on that is that, you know, and it's been invoked numerous times that we're in a housing crisis, I would say, we're not so much in a housing crisis as we're in an affordable housing crisis. There's a lot of unaffordable housing in Santa Cruz that's being built that exists, and that we have a responsibility, I think, to be as intentional as possible in promoting a diversity of housing types and, and supporting a diversity of, of homeowners and renters entering into that housing. And so, if we're kind of encouraging housing that's only going to be for the upper end, it's going to also not only affect those nine units, or eight units, but have gentrifying effects beyond this development as well, potentially. And so, I'm mindful of that. So, there's, there's environmental impacts, there's socioeconomic impacts of things that are built at this kind of, this kind of high end. And I think that the notion that simply building more is going to affect, is going to bring down costs, is something that the scholarship is really, is really challenged. And there's even a new study out by Michael Storper this past week about, the note, who's a urban sociologist, about, you know, this idea that you simply build more units, and that's going to, the greater supply is going to bring down the cost, has not been proven. And that often, if you just build more supply at the highest end, it actually worsens the affordability crisis. So, when I say being intentional, I mean, not only, you know, not underdeveloping affordable units, but not building units that are going to potentially exacerbate the affordability crisis. So, I guess I would say that I'm, I'm mindful of that in thinking about this relationship of the, the scale of the units, and the degree to which those may kind of, those might force a certain kind of cost per unit as well for those entering into this, into this market. And to say that that relates to questions about the contextual zoning, and the questions of how this relates to the surrounding neighborhood, the surrounding community, I think those are kind of interrelated issues. So, insofar as people are concerned about how this is going to be, you relate, you know, be consistent with the types of building and community, and the concern about segregation, and the concern about gated communities and so forth that are being created sort of within the Seabright neighborhood. So, I also am happy that people have been so kind of, you know, proactive in trying to suggest new kinds of designs and, and to work with the developer, and I think that there's a potential to really, in moving forward, to come up with something that's more consistent with these, with these simultaneous goals that we all have. So, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
I have a question for, one quick question for the applicant. With regard to the design, with the bedrooms being first and third floor, is that, would you expect the families to be drawn to that, or? Living, there was an assertion in public comment that families wouldn't live in a design like that because they want to be separated from the kids.
I don't know that, I, I don't know that you need to look at it that way. Certainly, we have a, you know, a large contingent of people in, in the market that are working out of their houses, so that lower bedroom could be used by somebody who's working from home, i.e. less vehicle trips. So, that's, that's diversity within the unit itself that provides different options for different types of living.
Thank you. I had a question for staff. How will the, how would the public know to, to use this pedestrian access? To just, you just kind of get used to it, and then?
Yeah, the, the way the plans are now, the, the locked gate goes across the sidewalk, so that would have to be remodeled, or, you know, that plan would be revised so that it wouldn't block the sidewalk access.
And then it says, come through here, it says nothing, or what's?
What's that?
How would, if I'm walking by, and, you know, I'm trying to respect private property, so I don't want to go in your driveway, but I can if it's public access, so how would I know that? And you just, people just figure it out?
I would imagine, yeah, you just figure it out.
I mean, near the, the little alleyway by Grand 40 Library is an example that, and people figure it out, well, a lot of people don't figure it out, but it's also not signed, so I guess it could work like that. I also had a question about the public meeting, was that part of the outreach?
Yes.
Was it a requirement? It wasn't just choice for the applicant?
No, no, that was our requirement.
Okay. And then could you bring up the zoning map from your staff presentation? So, RL, this is our, this is zoned RL, so the density range is 10 to 20 units.
Right, 10.1 to 20.
Uh-huh.
It can actually go up to, I think it's 27 and a half.
Yeah, with studio or one bedrooms.
With smaller units.
Okay. So, how do we reconcile that map and all of that RL, and the density of this project, the massing of this project, by that, by that language could be everywhere where the orange is? Is that true?
I'm not sure about the massing, but the density, it depends on the lot size.
Why couldn't the massing be, I mean, if, similar to this, if the massing is allowed, happens to be that massing, if the lot allows it with this density, it could be everywhere in that orange area, right?
I'm not sure, I don't understand your question.
Well, RL is everywhere, so, all of that RL could have the same density as this project.
Density and massing are the same thing.
Took the words right out of my mouth, yeah.
Right, the dense, the density, though.
Right.
Not the massing, right.
But the massing could be there as well. Nothing, as it's proposed here, it could be proposed on every other site that wants to reach the maximum density.
The reason I bring it up is because that density range and the character of this neighborhood are totally out of sync, and that's just the observation I have, that looking at that map, that is a really large section of RL that allows us for that 10.1 to 20, or 27.5, so. It's just, it's, I think it's a challenge to then, to carefully pick where we're going to put any given project, where we're going to slot them in that range, that's my own thinking, and that this one's quite high. Maybe not the density, but the, the resulting massing, to me, so that was, which has been reflected, which has been shared by some other commissioners. I don't have other questions for staff other than, because I don't want to repeat other commissioners, Commissioner Shifrin and then Commissioner Conway, are you going to suggest a path forward?
I have a, I just have another comment to make, I'm not, you know, really, it doesn't really change where it goes, but as we've been referring to, I think it is really important not to confuse density and massing. I understand- I understand why these units came in looking like they did. This is, it is just expensive to build in our community, in our whole area. And so to design a product that maximizes the possibility that you'll be able to get the financing it takes to build it, that drives a lot of it. And I think that's a lot of our frustration. I mean, I recognize that, that's got to be part of the driver here. But it's also, I think what we're hearing is that nine units, you could get 13 units if you used a density bonus, and it could be a much smaller building. I know that then you're right up against, well, are you going to be able to get it financed? Are you going to be able to, you know, render the, what it takes? And I know that that's the balancing point, and that's what's going to make it really tricky to make this a project that works. We need this project. My preference would be to see a 13-unit project of smaller units, much smaller units if possible. I know that there's a lot of things that we're juggling in there as well. It's just not a simple path. But I do think it's important to acknowledge that of all of the things that are driving here, one of them is just how much it's going to cost to build.
Mr. Schiffern?
Yes, a couple of things. One, I think that there've been many people in the neighborhood that would be very happy if the density determinations of RL was changed. And I think there have been requests to the city council to reconsider that and reduce the density because of how, the fear of how the neighborhood's going to change around it. On the other hand, I think one of the ways that increasing the density certainly on this parcel makes sense is that it's a pretty large parcel. And, you know, it's possible to add density to it and, I think, make it work. I think what Commissioner Conway's saying is, it's a balancing act. How do you protect, you know, the integrity, the quality of the neighborhood, provide additional housing units that provide some diversity and make it all work economically? It is a challenge, but that's, I think, our, as I see my responsibility on the commission, it's relating to trying to find the balance between those. And I think it's, the point about, you know, to get affordability, you need more units because that's how we can get the restricted unit. There's truth to that, but on the other hand, as Commissioner Greenberg was saying, what are we doing in terms of the impact of the market rate units on the neighborhood, on gentrification? And to be able to have a mix of units, I really thought that Commissioner Nielsen's comment about, they're all the same size, it's all going to be of one, going to appeal to one segment of the market, was a really insightful, for me, way of seeing that having some kind of diversity, some mixture of size and types and have them work on the site is maybe a challenge. But I think it's an important goal for us to try to support because it is desirable to, while we're increasing density, to also preserve what's valuable in terms of the quality of life in our neighborhoods. So what I'm hearing, and I'll try a motion and it can be ripped to shreds as it usually is, that we send this project back for redesign, to reduce the massing, to stay within the density range, if possible, to provide diversity of housing types within that range, and return to us when it's ready to go, when there's a project that is, that we're ready to review.
A second?
I'll second that.
And before we discuss it, is staff, Mike, does that give you enough direction to work with the applicant?
I would, unless you got a test, I'd like you to repeat it.
Did you get it?
I was distracted for a second. Continue for?
Commissioner Schiffern, could you try that again?
Continue for redesign with, to reduce the massing, to provide, stay within the density range, provide a variety of housing types.
So you're saying stay within the density range?
Yes.
Or maintain the nine-unit density that they've got?
No, I was saying stay within the density.
Range of the general plan.
I would like to add to, if I thought it would pass, to try to see if there was some way to retain the existing housing, because I think that's going to be the most affordable housing in the project. But I have a feeling I would certainly not have that pass. So I'm not making that. I hope that the applicant will consider it, but because I think, really, in terms of range of costs, having existing housing that's out there is going to be much less expensive than what any new market rate, any new market rate unit's going to cost. And so having that density range is desirable. And having been out there, I think the site allows for, you know, using the existing, providing some development around the existing units that could let them work. But I'm not putting that in the motion because...
So you have a motion and do you retain?
Just one second.
Point of order, actually. It's a question about the motion, which is just, I didn't understand, you said you're proposing that we continue the public hearing rather than just deny the project? I just was curious about the...
No, I'm not, I'm not, the motion is not to deny the project, but to continue the project for redesign so that it's, you know, I'm new on the commission, I haven't been here for a long time. I know at the county, when I listen to the county commission, you know, continuing for redesign is not revolutionary. So I would imagine that the commission has done that before. And given the concerns that most of the commissioners have made...
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Conway?
I was, it is an unusual action. And so I just was, that's what I was asking about, is I understand that we're not recommending this, what was proposed. So we're not recommending the staff recommendation, nor are we recommending that we tweak the staff recommendation. And I think in the past, in my experience, when we've, when we've asked a project just to, when we've just said, "Nope," you know, come back in another time, it didn't have to have a string or a word like continuance, but I'm not meaning to cut that too finely, whatever you think.
This is clear to me.
It is clear, okay.
I understand the clear to, or the continue to redesign.
Does that resolve your question? And then with the motion refined or reaffirmed, are you still a second it?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. So any discussion, motion?
No, I don't need a minute.
Okay.
I'd have a little discussion, but...
Let me just say one thing.
Commissioner Conway, do you, wait, Commissioner Conway, you want to go first with discussion then and then Commissioner Schiffern?
And I also need a little clarification because we had a, we had a little bit of piling on. So I think I know what you mean. I wanted to be clear, one of the points of within the density range allowed in the general plan, and one of the goals of the general plan is to be towards the top of the density because we have so little developable land. And I wanted to make sure that it wouldn't preclude consideration of applying the density bonus. That's not direction or anything, it's just, I just want to make sure that the motion doesn't preclude that because I think that might be a tool that could help meet some balances of a variety of housing types and make it pencil, potentially.
Commissioner Schiffern?
That's consistent with what my, what the motion says. And the reason why, rather than just continue it for redesign, is I know that, you know, the applicant would like some guidance. And if the commission agrees that with the sort of conditions of the motion, then that provides some guidance. I'm open to other suggestions. I'm just, I wanted to get a motion on the floor that reflected what I was hearing regarding the concerns of other commissioners, if I didn't do a good job or if there are other concerns that should be added. I think it is useful, rather than just say, go back and try to do a better job, to give some direction as to what might make sense for the commission. And that's what the motion tries to do.
Other discussion? Commissioner Nielsen?
Well, this is actually, I have, I know these conditions are not going to, since we're not approving this, that the conditions are, you know, don't really matter right now. But there was just some housecleaning things that I just want to point to your attention so that you can take care of it next time, so that it gets taken care of. For, condition 48, it says, "Except as provided in condition number 48 above," but that is condition number 48 that, so that's something you may want to look at. Condition 55, "Turf is not permitted in new non-residential landscape projects," but this is a residential project, so I'm not sure why that condition is there. You could look at condition 56 as well, and there's a typo in there, so you could find that one. And then 67, that says, "Handicap access shall be provided in accordance with California Building Code." I would suggest just that stating accessibility shall be provided in accordance with California Building Code, rather than having the word handicap in there. That was just my suggestion.
Accessibility.
And that was it.
Mike, are you getting useful direction? Would you like?
No, no, the conversation's been good. I think it's a good outcome.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, one other thing I just wanted to mention while you were deliberating, was looking up some of the laws in reference to what the city's obligated to approve. And the reference may have been to the Housing Accountability Act, that's AB 3194, which requires, you know, if a project meets objective standards and the city's obligated to approve it. When we bring this back, we'll take a closer look at this project in relation to that Senate bill and provide you an analysis with that as well.
I do.
Thank you. Any other discussion? So, all in favor of the motion?
Could we just hear the motion?
Do you want to try a test or do you want me to do it?
I pretty much haven't. I mean, I'll have a better one, I played backwards.
I'd like you to share it because if it's not right, then Commissioner...
To continue the project for redesign that would include reducing the massing, staying within the density range and providing for diversity of the building slash units on the project site.
And there was a reference to density bonus being able to be considered.
That was formally included?
It was, it was just a part of the discussion.
I just said that would be consistent with the motion.
I wanted to clarify that it wasn't, I think we agreed that it is.
I'm happy to add it as a friendly amendment if that's acceptable to second.
First of all, was that reading consistent with your motion?
Yes.
Okay. And are you adding a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Sure. I mean, I don't, I don't need it. I don't think that it necessarily will make it affordable, that I didn't want it to be precluded, and I think we're all on the same page.
Given the way that the state law is written about density bonuses, it doesn't need saying, but if my colleague would like it said, I'm happy to include it in the motion.
Are you including it?
Yes.
Okay. Are you?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Commissioner Nielsen?
I just have one, one more thing for Mike. What's it going to take? I mean, just in line with Commissioner Spellman's comments earlier about requirements for, like drawing requirements, graphic requirements, what does it take or what needs to happen in order for that to get as part of what the application process is? Like, is there, is there some sort of formal process that has to be gone through to get those requirements, you know, in writing and to the applicants?
We have most of, well, some of what Commissioner Spellman is asking for on our application form. We've been learning in the last year or so to play harder ball with our applicants.
So the...
I think where we've been more proactive is with the larger developments, like the one you just heard downtown and getting those section drawings. You know, but we can, it's an item on our checklist and it's really at the planner's discretion and, you know, I think, you know, with this experience of, you know, sort of a smaller project relative to those downtown projects that we can, and we'll ask for them moving forward.
Okay. Okay. It's, it's just super helpful. I mean, and to analyze a project and to understand the potential impact it's going to have in the surrounding area, it's, yeah, it's critical to have that information.
Yeah, I agree.
Commissioner Spellman did, he mentioned some stuff that I'd never seen before, the site plan that had the neighboring houses that called out the height of those houses and the, and the use of those houses.
Certainly the figure ground, you know, footprint of the structures.
Yeah, no, I've seen the footprint.
Could I make a sort of point of procedure? Shouldn't we vote on the motion on the floor and then it may make sense to have another motion having to do with, you know, sort of application requirements?
Well, I'm not going to do that tonight. We're going to, we're going to move on once, so I'm allowing...
Somebody can always make a motion.
Not on a not-agendized matter. So that's why I'm allowing the, allowing the discussion to see if it's useful for this, this project as it comes back. Is that, are your comments being?
Yeah, there have been certain things added recently. I think maybe we should set up something where we could just check in with staff and see if we could add a few more if it seems reasonable.
Okay.
And see if that can happen.
So all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
So the motion passes 6-1 with Commissioner Singleton voting against. And I also want to say again, share my thank you to all the members of the public who attended the community meeting and attended tonight and shared your comments and shaped them in a constructive way to guide a better project for the community.
And for benefit of the neighbors, since this is not continued to a date certain, we will provide additional noticing once the project's ready for hearing again.
Thank you all for coming. We do have more work on our agenda, so if you're going to chat, please do so outside so we can continue our work. And our next agenda item is, agenda item, agenda number six, 601 Brant Fordy Drive, and we have a staff presentation.
Yes, Clara Stangers, the project planner, should be given the staff presentation this evening.
Thank you.
You guys ready? Okay. Okay, this is a little bit of a smaller project. This is for a single-family home at 601 Brant Fordy Drive. It requires a lot line adjustment, design permit, slope variance, and a water course development permit. Okay, so this project consists of four vacant lots on the west side of Brant Fordy Drive, just south of its intersection with Glen Canyon Road. To the east, we have De La Vega Park. The area is zoned R17, which is single-family zoning typically with a 7,000-square-foot lot size. The lots to the west is a Carbonara neighborhood, that's also R17 zoning. Adjacent properties to the north and the south of this property, interestingly, are in the unincorporated county area. So it's a little bit weird with our jurisdictional boundaries. So the site is accessed off of a shared driveway that is to the west of and a little bit down slope from Brant Fordy Drive. The site itself slopes from the east down to the west towards Brant Fordy Creek. The channel of Brant Fordy Creek is actually on the adjacent properties to the west. So here's the site plan. The site plan is focused on the two southern lots of the four lots that are going to be combined. So those two lots down there with the 552 and the one right below it, that's what we see right here. The reason for that is that these two lots actually have the least steep of slope and therefore is the, is the buildable area. North of that, the slope gets too steep. The proposal is to build a 3,264-square-foot, two-story, three-bedroom house. The house exceeds all the setbacks required for the R17 zone district. In fact, it's 47 feet on the side yard setback to the south where the minimum setback is seven feet, so there's plenty of space between the proposed house and a small house on the neighboring property to the south. It's about 275 feet from the side property line to the north. Forty, I'm sorry... Um, forty, I'm sorry, fifty-five to the rear and twenty-four feet from the front. Um, in, in addition to the house, the project is also proposing some upgrades to an existing drainage pipe that actually drains, uh, rainwater runoff from Branson Forty Drive onto the property, so they're gonna extend that drainage down slope and, um, below the house. Okay, um, the proposal also includes a septic system, which will be located southeast, um, that's the, the green area there, um, southeast of the house, at the top of the slope, um, and just below the shared driveway. This is one of the few properties in the city that the Public Works Department would support to have a septic system. The reason is because it's over two hundred feet from the closest city sewer connection. Um, Branson Forty Drive is actually maintained by the county, and they don't have a sewer line on that street. Um, the Santa Cruz County Environmental Health Department has approved the septic system with a condition that the lots are first combined. Our municipal code section six point twenty point oh one oh, section two, requires that the septic system obtain approval from city council, so a condition of approval requires that this septic system be approved by city council prior to issuance of a building permit for the house. And again, the Public Works Department has reviewed and is supportive of that, um, system. Okay, so, um, like I said earlier, Branson Forty Creek is just to the west of the site. Um, the top of the bank of Branson Forty Creek is shown approximately by that brown line, um, and that is an important line because that marks the jurisdiction boundary of the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um, the Regional Water Quality Control Board has confirmed that they, um, do not require a permit, um, and this is specifically for the work below the top of bank, which is, um, the, um, basically that drainage outfall, um, like dissipation area that they're gonna build below the top of bank there. Um, California Department of Fish and Wildlife is requiring a stream bed alteration agreement, um, and a draft agreement has been, um, written up that will be finalized, um, upon approval of this project and the SEQA determination. Um, work that requires a permit from another permitting agency that has a similar or more rigorous, rigorous, sorry, level of environmental review, um, as our city's water course development permit, is actually exempt from requiring a water course development permit, so the work below the top of bank, um, does not require a water course development permit from us. However, some other parts of the project will require that permit. Um, Branson Forty Creek is considered a type A creek in the City White Creeks and Wetlands Management Plan. Um, type A basically means that it's, um, a larger creek with, um, kind of a more, um, intact riparian area. Um, so there's a forty-foot riparian setback that's shown, um, by the blue line. A seventy-foot development setback is shown in red, and then the ninety-five-foot management setback is shown in green. Um, as you can see, the western edge of the house, along with two cantilever balconies, are located within the management setback of the creek, and that is allowed with approval of a water course development permit for a type A creek. Um, the way the proposed house is built, as you'll see in the next few slides, it's built up on piers and really doesn't have any extra paving around the house. Um, and the, um, plan is also to retain the existing, uh, natural landscaping on the site. In those ways, the proposal is compatible with the goals of the City White Creeks and Wetlands Management Plan and the findings for the water course development permit. Um, some additional conditions of approval, um, will help to ensure that the project is compatible with that plan and with the findings for the water course development permit. Uh, these conditions include implementing stormwater BMPs during the, um, building permit, replanting areas that are disturbed, um, during site preparation and construction with native ground cover species, um, and, um, having any exterior lighting, um, that's within the management setback, um, to be cast downward and away from the creek. Um, also, because of the property's proximity to Branson Forty Creek, um, part of the site is mapped as potentially having sensitive riparian habitat under General Plan twenty thirty, um, so a biotic report was completed for the project by Biotic Resources Group and Dana Blandon Associates. The report found that the entire, um, project area where there's, where there's gonna be work is actually outside of the riparian habitat, um, but it also found that there is some redwood forest habitat on the site. Um, the report recommended, um, to have native and non-invasive landscaping species, um, which the project isn't planning any new landscaping, but that, that is gonna be required for any revegetation, um, for, uh, from the site disturbance during, um, construction. Um, and then the report also recommended, um, erosion co, control measures for the drainage work to be completed within the creek setbacks. Uh, these recommendations are both included as conditions of approval. Um, and then finally, um, we do have, uh, the Planning Department's new-ish bird-safe building design standard, um, which has glazing and lighting standards to help prevent, um, building-related bird mortality near natural areas, um, so a condition of approval requires the glazing or lighting on the east elevation of the house facing Branson Forty Creek, um, to be designed to meet this standard. Okay, there are also, um, a number of trees on the site. It's a wooded site. Um, eight of the trees in the project area are considered heritage trees, um, and this was determined by the arborist report prepared for the project. The report recommended removal of three trees, which I've circled in red. Um, tree number three is a fifteen-point-nine-inch diameter bay tree that is within the building envelope and will need to be removed for that reason. Tree number twenty-seven is a twenty-six-inch bay tree that is dead. Um, and then tree number ten is a two-trunk, um, bay tree. Uh, one trunk is twenty-four-point-eight inches and the other is twenty-one inches. That tree has significant decay and, and is at risk of failure, so, uh, the recommendation is to remove that tree. All other heritage trees will be protected. Um, the city urban forester has reviewed the arborist report and agrees with the recommendations for removal and for protection of the other trees, um, and is requiring, um, payment of tree replacement in lieu fees for two of the three trees to be removed. Um, she's not requiring payment of the fee for the dead tree because it's already dead. Um, the biotic report for the project also recommended, um, had some tree-related recommendations. Um, one of the recommendations, um, was for the timing of tree removal during the year and limbing, I'm sorry, tree removal or limbing of the tree, um, during certain parts of the year to avoid bird nesting season, um, as well as completing pre-removal bird surveys in order to comply with federal and state, um, requirements for migratory birds or raptors. Um, the, the biotic report also recommended removal of heritage trees in accordance with the heritage tree ordinance, which, um, we do anyways, um, but these recommendations are included as conditions of approval. Oh, there we go. Okay, so moving on to slope, um, this might be the most exciting part of the site here. Um, as previously mentioned, the project is, the site is steeply sloped. Um, the screen shows a slope density map, so the white areas are where the slope is less than thirty percent. The solid gray is where the slope is between thirty and fifty percent, and then the more kinda hatched gray area is where the slope actually exceeds fifty percent. So you can see the outline of the house on this plan, as well as the, the little circles, which are the foundation piers. Most, um, it's located mostly over the solid gray area with slopes between thirty and fifty percent, um, but the westernmost part of the house is over an area that's less than thirty percent, while the eastern part of the house is partially over areas, um, that exceed fifty percent slope. So, the slope regulations and the zoning ordinance prohibit construction on slopes that exceed fifty percent. However, the ordinance also exempts minor sculpted landforms, um, from slope ordinance requirements. In this case, the geotechnical engineer, um, that has been working with the applicant has determined that, that the area of slope here that exceeds fifty percent is actually caused by the, um, by the drainage pipe from Branson Forty Creek that has caused some additional erosion of the top soil, basically. Um, and, so, what they determine is that, that part of the slope that exceeds fifty percent does so because of this kind of man-made thing. Um, if it wasn't there, then the whole slope would be less than fifty percent. Um, so, in that case, um, because this is considered like a man-made excessive slope, it's not, um, it's exempt from the slope ordinance restriction pertaining to fifty percent slopes. I'd also like to note that the project is rerouting that drainage down slope, um, and below the house, so it will no longer exacerbate, um, the erosion of that area. So, a slope variance is required for construction on a slope greater than thirty percent. In order to qualify for a slope variance, there must be a hardship peculiar to the property, um, and the slope variance should be needed in order for the property to exercise normal property rights. In this case, because of the locations of significant trees on the property, um, including, we got a really big redwood tree right down here, um, so we have that. Also because the, um, east side of the property is very steeply sloped, um, that's right next to the, uh, shared driveway, and because much of the sloped area under thirty percent is actually within the development setback of Branson Forty Creek and cannot be developed, it's not really possible to build the house unless it is on a slope that exceeds thirty percent. Lots in the R one seven zone district are developed with single-family homes. It's single-family, um, zoning, um, so in this case, construction of the house on this site would not be a privilege above what would be allowed on other lots in the same zone district. Um, the proposed project has been evaluated by a geotechnical engineer, um, with Pacific Crest Engineering. Um, their evaluation found that, um, the slope on the site consists of several feet of silty sand over schist bedrock, um, and so they recommended basically that the foundation can consist of piers drilled into the bedrock. Um, they also provided recommendations for site preparation, drainage, um, erosion Um, the house is designed to have a pure foundation, as you'll see in the next few slides, um, and all the recommendations of the geotechnical report are included as conditions of approval. Um, the septic system plan, um, which we saw earlier, has also been, um, reviewed and stamped by a geologist, ensuring that it has been designed with consideration of the slope on the site. Okay, so we'll have a quick look at the design. This is the view from the shared driveway that runs parallel and a little bit down slope of Branson Forty Drive. Um, the garage appears to be a one-story structure from this view, and then the rest of the house kinda drops down the hills, so, um, you have an unobstructed view of the forested area. Here's a drawing of the south elevation. Um, so this is the side view of the house. Um, the house is gonna have corten steel panel siding, aluminum windows, um, and steel and cable balcony railings, um, so it's a pretty consistent architectural theme, um, around the house. Uh, the house design meets slope modification permit findings, um, since it steps the house down in three segments, um, thus following the natural slope landform on the site. By using pure foundations, it minimizes the modification of the slope, so it's not cutting into the slope, basically. Um, and then finally, the rooftop decks and the cantilever decks provide, um, a significant amount of usable open space for the residents that the site otherwise, no, would not be able to provide due to the steep slope. So here's our rendering of the west elevation. Um, this is basically the back of the house, so it's not really something the public would view, but, um, you can see again how the house steps down, um, and that the same design theme is continued around the house. Then there's the view from the north side of the house. Um, so overall, the proposed house meets all development standards for a substandard lot in the R one seven zone district, um, including for lot coverage, uh, the size of the second story setbacks, um, number of parking spaces, and building height. Uh, because, uh, there is a slight discrepancy in the noted building height of, of the top segment on the plans, um, I have included a precautionary condition of recruit, approval to make sure the building permit plans show that height of the top story, or, I'm sorry, the top section, there is no more than thirty feet, um, to make sure it meets that R one seven zone district standard. So, in conclusion, the project meets all of the zoning ordinance site standards and all findings for the lot line adjustment, design permit, slope variance, and water course development permit. Uh, the project is exempt from SEQA pursuant to Public Resources Code, section twenty-one oh eight three point three and SEQA guidelines, section one five one eight three. These, um, code sections exempt projects from requiring a SEQA review, um, that would repeat an analysis from a certified general plan EIR, and where the project is consistent with the general plan and local zoning regulations. Um, a SEQA exemption checklist has been developed to confirm this finding. Staff therefore recommends approval of the project, um, as well as acknowledgement of the environmental determination. This concludes my presentation. Um, I would like to note that I have not received any comments from the public, um, but I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite the...
Can I ask some questions, please?
I'm gonna invite the applicant up and then...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll do some staff questions from commissioners. Welcome. Usually limit applicant, applications to twenty minutes.
Okay.
Presentations.
Um, yeah, my name's Courtney Hughes. I'm with William Fisher Architecture. I'm a senior designer there. Um, I've designed this house and been working closely with the client, um, along with Clara and to, kind of, address all of the concerns. Um, it was a really challenging site to design on. As you can see, there are a lot of restrictions with setbacks, existing trees, and really steep slopes, so we also worked really closely with Pacific Crest Engineering, um, the geotechnical engineer at Pacific Crest, and then also, um, Ifland Civic, Civil Engineers, um, and we've actually, although we're not at the stage yet until we have design approval to begin getting into the details with structural engineer, we've been consulting with the structural engineer that the client will be working with closely to make sure that, um, any concerns about the steepness of the slope, um, and the soils on the site and the drainage and everything are all kind of well-coordinated and thought through. Um, so, yeah, if you have any questions for me, I would love to answer them.
Okay, thank you. We'll, um, call you back up if we, if we do. Thank you very much. So, any questions for staff before we go to public comment? Commissioner Shifrin?
I have a number of questions. Um, as I remember the staff report, the current four lots are substandard, and the one lot is substandard in terms of developable area. Is that, my understanding correct?
That's correct. Uh, the four, the four lots when combined are still substandard, although it is less non-conforming than when they started out.
Does the general plan and zoning ordinance allow the creation of substandard lots? I would assume that one of the purposes of the general plan is not to allow the creation of substandard lots.
Uh, my understanding is when, when you're, if you're gonna subdivide a parcel, you need to create substandard lots. If you're doing a lot line adjustment and you're starting out with a non-conforming situation, if you're, if you're not making that any worse, and in this case, it's making it closer to a conforming situation, then that's something that we would encourage.
So, you're saying that the general, that the zoning ordinance does allow for the creation of a new substandard? creation of a new substandard?
Subdivision ordinance discourages creation of substandard lots through subdivision. This is not a subdivision. This is a boundary line adjustment, and there's, our hands are really tied with respect to what we can and cannot regulate with boundary line adjustments. And as Clara said, I mean, we wouldn't otherwise recommend consolidations of lots in a residential zone, except for the fact that it is making a situation less non-conforming.
I'm just asking whether it's consistent with the code and whether the code allows for a lot line adjustment when the lot line adjustment leads to the creation of a substandard lot?
I think the code is silent with respect to that. It's very clear with respect to creation of lots through subdivision, but that's not what this is.
Well, it's a creation of a lot through a lot line adjustment.
Yeah, it's consolidation of lots.
Was a tree permit acquired for, I went out to the site, so there is a large tree that had like six or seven trunks that had been cut down right in the middle of the site. Was it, did the city issue a, I can't believe that wasn't a heritage tree. Did the city issue a tree permit for the cutting down of that tree?
Commissioner Shifrin, would you like to invite the applicant back up to answer that?
Yeah. It's my understanding, the clients explained to me, that some of the trees that Arbrist had actually found were going to fail have fallen down, or there have been, some of the trees have failed, and I don't believe that any permits were ever pulled to remove any trees. He's cleared trees that fell of natural causes on the site.
Well, it sure looked like they were shaved off, like a natural falling to me.
I mean, I wasn't there, but my understanding is that it could have been that parts of the limbs fell down and he--
Okay, so there was no tree removal permit that was--
Not that I'm aware of.
Why didn't, since there's no SEQA document here, except for the initial study that supposedly justifies an exemption, which usually doesn't have an initial study, why didn't the staff report, or why wasn't the biotic report included so that the commission could review the biotic report? There's no, the only information is in the staff report itself, and there's no SEQA document to really-- The draft agreement with Fish and Wildlife isn't included. I'm just wondering why those supportive documents weren't provided to the commission as part of the-- This is, I mean, I don't know if other commissioners have been out there. This isn't a slope, it's a cliff. I mean, if I fell off the driveway, that'd be the end of me. I wouldn't slide down a slope. So the slope regulations, to say that the slope regulations can give exceptions makes me wonder, what couldn't they give exceptions to? It's hard to believe there'd be a site in the city that they couldn't figure out a way. And I understand the staff presentation that the building on the slope above 50 percent was man-made. It sure looked like it was all part of a hole that went on for quite a while down the hill. But I guess I'll wait till it comes back to, you know, talk about my SEQA concerns, because my feeling is that the approach that staff has used to justify not providing a SEQA document essentially sets a precedent that I don't see how we'd ever need a SEQA document for any development in the city of Santa Cruz. The combination of the general plan covering everything, and then what isn't covered is covered by uniformly applied standards, which is the water course requirements and the slope requirements that can allow development on this site without any meaningful SEQA review, as far as I'm concerned. So that's a concern that I have with this project.
Any other staff questions?
No.
Any other--
Not this time.
--questions for staff? So one, sorry. Commissioner Spellman?
Yeah, so the septic is unusual. You mentioned 200 feet to actually hook up to a sewer. Which direction is that?
I believe it's, I don't think the code talks about the direction. It's under, I think, chapter six or title, title, chapter six of the municipal--
I mean, so there is no physical sewer to hook up to in 200 feet. That's the way I understood.
There is not, there is a sewer connection in the Carbonara neighborhood. It's about, the house, it's about 230 feet to the west, but that's still over 200 feet, and it's, they wouldn't connect a sewer line going across Bransafordie Creek.
Okay. Yeah, no, I don't think that's a reasonable--
And then beyond that, I think the city sewer is a half a mile, or I think it's a half a mile down the road to the south. Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So we'll invite any members of the public to address the commission on this. Welcome. Please sign in if you would, and you can sign in after if you like, and share your name if you're willing.
Hey, I'm Frank Mena. I live two doors down from where this will be placed, and I've lived there for over 30 years, and during that time, this lot has been essentially abandoned. So over those years, we've seen illegal dumping. We have seen trees falling across the road that have blocked access to our homes, and we have seen the thickets of poison oak and so on developing in that lot. And when Tyler has come in, the applicant, he has taken responsibility for that lot, cleared out the thickets, cleared out the trash, taken and really made this a piece of property that is being taken care of, that someone is responsible for. So this has made an enormous difference for all of us living on the small dirt road that runs past it. So from the standpoint of seeing this become a property that is taken care of, that is somebody's home, that has someone that is responsible for it, it makes an enormous difference to all of us. And from what I've seen here tonight with the application and the way that this is being developed, it seems like a continuance of what I have seen from his behavior. Responsible, well-thought-out, putting on pylons so that it minimizes the disturbance. Just everything I've seen about it, I'm very impressed. I'm very happy to see the possibility of this going in there, and so I really want to say the degree to which I support this application, joining the lots, taking care of the situation. For example, the trees that you're mentioning, they fell across our road and blocked all access. We called Tyler up the next day. He had people out in the morning, cutting those up, clearing them from the road, and this was trunks 24 to 28 inches in diameter each, three or four of them completely blocking our access to our homes. He took care of it. He just made that happen immediately. So I have to say that whereas I might be very cautious about anyone else going in, I am very happy to see this happening. I'm really pleased with the plans that I've seen. I'm completely in support of it, and as I said, I live basically probably 100 feet from where this home will be. So it will be directly affecting me. I want to see it there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. So we usually invite the applicant back to offer rebuttal if you have any of public comment. It's just one favorable comment, but--
Well, I will just say I really appreciate the support. Also, just, I was reminded, listening to his comments about Tyler, how impressed I've been also. This is, you know, this is a person who's building a home for his, you know, he just got married, he and his wife are wanting to move into a home. He's put a lot of time into designing this to meet their needs, and it's been a really, like I said, a challenge, as we were trying to create something on this steep slope, but also really, really enjoyable process, and I think that we've come up with something that's really unassuming from the road, which was important to us, to not have this big, massive structure there that also met his needs of a three-bedroom home for him and his family. And I, yeah, again, happy to answer any questions, but just wanted to comment on kind of the person that is behind a lot of this design is the client.
Thank you. Bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Singleton?
I'm prepared to make a motion, but I'll--
Do so and see if it's seconded, and we'll have a discussion on the motion.
Great. I'd like to move that the planning commissioner acknowledged the environmental determination and approved the lot line adjustment, design permit, slope variance, and water course development permit based upon the findings listed below and the conditions of approval listed in Exhibit A.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Commissioner Shifrin?
Yes, I'm not going to support the motion. I have a question for staff regarding the comment that the city council must approve, the septic system. What is their authority about this project? What if they deny the septic system?
They deny a septic system, they're going to need to find a way to hook up to the sewer system. And, you know, the question before them is, A, does the environmental health department, are they supportive of this, which we know is true? The other provision, I think, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that there has to be some kind of a hardship. 200 feet is sort of set as the base. You know, if you're less than 200 feet, the expectation is that you connect. If it's more, you can apply to the city council for the septic system.
Well, having been out there, I think the, you know, the staff determination on the SEQA review makes a mockery of our regulations. I don't see how any project can be approved that has potentially significant environmental effects that aren't really even analyzed sufficiently under the, you know, the normal SEQA document. So I just, I don't, I'm concerned about, you know, creating a substandard lot. I'm concerned about having a septic tank so close to the Bransafordie Creek. There's no information on the 100-year floodplain or in current years, the 500-year floodplain. I'm frankly surprised that the county has agreed to this septic tank right above the creek. I understand that there's a planning, that there's a draft agreement with state fish and wildlife, but it hasn't been approved. One of the findings is that all the, all the other agreements have been approved. I know that state fish and wildlife, a stream bed alteration permit usually uses the SEQA analysis that locals, local government provides, and in this case, it's, it's not a, I don't consider it a meaningful SEQA analysis, since it's a, it's an exception, it's really not an exception, it's not even an exception. It's essentially, the determination is that there doesn't need to be any SEQA analysis whatsoever because of the general plan and because of these various ordinances that supposedly take care of all the problems, which instead of having mitigation measures are really just conditions that, without any public review, and I just think that this is, it just is not the way the SEQA process should operate.
Other discussion? Commissioner Conway?
Yeah. Appreciate your thoughtful view on that. I don't see it that way. There is a SEQA document. The reason it's in draft form, as I understand it, is that this needs to be adopted. For the, this exemption needs to be adopted. Was that right?
That's correct. Part of your motion would be to acknowledge the determination, which--
And at that point, the agreement that's been negotiated can become final.
That's correct.
Right. I actually thought it was a fascinating building, and I mean, like, I was, when I first looked at it, I was actually really interested in what you guys were going to say about it. But the more I read about it, I mean, I think there has, it does look like it's been really thoughtful. I really appreciate hearing that this is an opportunity to really make the neighborhood work better, and I kind of want to see the building, so I support it.
Commissioner Spellman?
Yeah, I support that thought, too. It's obviously been sensitively designed to the conditions that are there. I mean, it floats lightly on that slope. There will be piers going down, but the house itself sort of floats in the landscape, which is, I think, very sensitively done, and obvious attention to street views, which they didn't have to comply with, but the fact that it sort of disappears and falls down the hill is kind of an interesting idea. Yeah, encourage more unconventional-looking housing.
Other discussion?
I have a couple of questions with regard, I've not, since I've been on the commission, we haven't had this, we haven't had a Level A water course development issue, and so I'm not familiar with the process for the water course development management plan. You're saying we kind of punt on that because the regional board and DFW get involved?
So the, there is an exception to the water course development permit for projects that require a permit from like a state or federal agency that have their own environmental review. So it's the part of this project that's below the top of bank. That part is getting a permit from California Department of Fish and Wildlife, so that part is, was not reviewed as part of this water course development permit. This permit reviewed everything between the management setback and the top of bank, which was a little piece of the house, and then the top part of that extended drainage.
And then do you, do you task yourself with looking at the stream bed alteration agreement that DFW has drafted to make sure that that is at least as rigorous as the city--
Yeah, I look through it, and they had a number of conditions, which I think actually goes beyond what we would have required, probably.
Is there anything that the city can do or will do to, so how about, how about then after this is approved? What I'm worried about is the creek. I'm not actually worried about the slope because I think engineers can dig into that bedrock and make it all safe based on seismic studies and all that. I'm not worried about that. I'm worried about the steelhead. Not very often does the city actually have development along a Level A water course, so Level B stuff is, you know, not as valuable. There is, there are special status species in this creek, and there's not one big problem for those. It's a bunch of problems, and it's little by little, we nickel-and-dime their habitat, so that's why I'm really concerned with this. So my question is, what, after we approve this, if the city does that, then there's no mechanism to go back and, you don't go back and check to see if the lot is managed in any certain way, right? Inappropriate landscaping or clearing or--
Well, I mean, we have a condition of approval for, oh, I'm not sure exactly how it's written. We, I mean, we have a condition of approval for when they, when they re-vegetate the site, for erosion control that needs to have native landscaping.
I saw that condition, and I'm just, I mean, you don't go and, you don't go back into people's backyard a year or five years later, I realize, so I think I know the answer. I'm just trying to think about it.
Yeah. Beyond that, there are water course development standards, and there's a pretty specific list of things that would need a water course development permit in the setbacks of a type A creek. We're not going to go and make sure they're reading all of those, but if, and this happens sometimes, if they're doing something they shouldn't, and somebody files a complaint, that would go through our code enforcement process, and then they would--
It's just code enforcement.
--clean it up.
And it's happened before, where we've dealt with it through the code enforcement, you know, through the complaint process, and then, you know, when we go out there and look at it, we're, you know, looking at the conditions of approval on this, and if they're not being met, we can use our code enforcement tools to deal with it.
Okay.
I'd also like to respond to the comment regarding SEQA. Just briefly, I mean, you, I know some of you who have been on the commission longer-- have seen these, these documents prepared, but SEQA does include provisions to streamline review when it's appropriate. We think this is one of those situations, you know, we're really not avoiding SEQA. I mean, the, I think Commissioner Schiffern said it itself, said himself, you know, we did the analysis through the initial study. I mean, some agencies, it's, it's done so out of an abundance caution. It's above and beyond, I think, what other agencies do. The mitigations, the idea here is the mitigations are built in not only with our general plan EIR, but through uniformly development standards, uniformly applied development standards. You know, if there is something peculiar to the site, then we do, we can look at it through either a negative declaration or maybe an EIR. That didn't apply here. We're very careful in our analysis, so I, this is something that's, that's allowed in the law. We've, we've sort of templated it with our SEQA consultant and our SEQA attorneys. They've reviewed many of these. We feel like we're on, on very firm legal ground using them, and, and I will say, they're, they're less susceptible to challenge in court than a negative declaration, again, if it's appropriate.
Any other comments? I would, I will say that if, if we were to see this, this type of thing again, I would like to see the, the draft stream bed alteration agreement. Again, being really concerned about the habitat, I can't, as the city and this body, we can't tell the state to do so differently, but I would have some more comfort level with knowing exactly what's in there.
We can certainly keep that in mind, and also for you, keep in mind, if there's something that you see in the report or reference to something that we haven't included, don't hesitate to contact us, and we'll make it available right away. But that, that's a good comment. We can certainly attach those.
Okay. So, discussion seems to have stalled, and we have a motion in a second, so I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed?
No.
Okay, so the motion passes 6-1 with Commissioner Schiffern voting against, and thank you, staff, for that. Thank you to the applicant, and that's the end of our agenda. Other than information items, are there any, Eric?
Just coming up at our next meeting, June 6th, we have the right-of-way abandonment for 517 High. You heard that a month or two ago, so that'll be coming through. There's also an appeal of a decision I made as zoning administrator regarding a medical facility in the Cooper House. That's, that's scheduled for next meeting. So, that's what we have. And then, out on June 20th, we tentatively have a community care facility on Mission Street.
What's the schedule in July? Is the commission meeting in July?
Yeah, there's only one meeting in July because the other one falls on the 4th, and I'm definitely not going to be here.
I think we changed that.
So, it's just, did we?
I think we have it on the 3rd.
You had discussed that, I think.
I don't have, I mean, we don't have anything right now for that meeting, so...
So, so that's, it's scheduled, it's scheduled for the 3rd, and we may have no business? Is that...
Yeah, we may not need it. Doesn't look like we need it right now.
Okay.
So, the commission doesn't take any break? It just meets year-round?
I see where you're getting at.
We do cancel more meetings than the council does though, so, for what it's worth.
Well, we did have that one long gap for a while.
Any other, any other information items, Eric?
No.
Okay. Any subcommittee advisory? We're, we're not just quite wrapped up. Any subcommittee or advisory body oral reports?
Well, I'm on this West Cliff tack, and there are really two aspects to it. One is adaptation, and one is level rise with the beaches. We've had the first meeting for the adaptation, and we're having a virtual first meeting of the beach, LCP amendment process at some point in the next couple of months.
Next couple of months, okay. Thank you.
Everybody can find it.
Thanks for serving on that. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.